And we'll get whenever you're ready.
Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and was also sent to the two overtimes in the Star Ledger. That notice is also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call, please Sandy.
Mr. Bordelon. Mr. Bordelon. Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Koch.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Paolo.
Here.
Mr. Rolfe.
Here.
Mr. Nitka.
Here.
Mr. Burkhart. Mr. Burkhart.
He's just logging on.
Yep.
Here, Mr. Burkhart.
I'm here.
Yeah.
He's here.
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. D'Angelo.
Here.
And Ms. Murray. And Mr. Leader.
I'm here, Ms. Murray is not here.
Correct.
Okay, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. Under God.
Well done. Okay, so the agenda tonight has a series of items on it. The matter with regard to the stormwater management ordinance, we're going to push to the back of the agenda. The presentation by the borough involves borough professionals and so what I'd like to do is to move them forward and get them started and then we will save time at the end. The borough actually has two projects that they've submitted to the planning board for capital review. What we'll do is we'll move through as much of the material as we can and we'll call it at some sort of reasonable hour, perhaps around nine. Hopefully we'll be able to get through some section of something. I don't like sort of abrupt endings, but you know, we'll see how that plays out. And then we have some other administrative items, notably we, I will be making a recommendation for vice chair this evening. So you'll have to stick around till the end of the meeting to see how that plays out. So with that being said, we have a presentation by the borough with regard to a capital review. And what I'd like to do is Doug, I'd like you to please outline for the, for the board what this process is about and Joe, while Doug is doing that, maybe you'd like to move forward the borough's professionals that are going to be giving the presentation to the planning board tonight.
Very good. Review of capital projects. It's provided for the municipal use law at section forty, colon fifty-five D dash thirty-one. It's also reflected in our ordinance, our development ordinances at section thirty, subsection three point one I ten. Essentially, whenever a, a public entity like the borough, the tricky event is when they're going to be spending public funds with regard to a capital project, that project is reviewed by the planning board. It's reviewed. Important distinction in this is we, the borough is not coming before us for any type of approval. They're simply presenting their capital project, we are reviewing it and we review that project. The statute is conjunction with the master plan. Basically, take a look at it. See if it fits within the master plan, make recommendations to the governing body. I like to say that we are the legislative committee, if you will, for the governing body to advise them whether or not it fits within the master plan, any concerns we have and/or the constituent elements of the master plan. So I, I think earlier we had some discussions, at least with regard to reviews of school projects, this is slightly different section of the municipal land use law in our ordinances, but our function is relatively the same. We should take a look at the site, take a look at circulation, take a look at those types of issues with the understanding that if we have concerns, we're going to make recommendations to the governing body. Again, our recommendations do not bind the governing body. Basically, this is a function to make sure that the planning board and any entity that's going to be making expenditure of public funds is coordinated with a master plan. I read master plan liberally, our courts have interpreted master plan liberally. So that includes also any of our reexamination reports. And I would note that sixteen of our last reexamination report of our master plan said, page sixteen, both of the facilities that we are reviewing this evening were addressed and recommendations were made concerning both of those facilities. I don't want to bore you too much, but there's just two short paragraphs. With regard to the police department, as I say at page sixteen, the following was noted. The facility is approximately eighteen hundred square feet. The space is outdated and suffers from storage configuration of small rooms. There is inadequate storage and the jail cells can only be reached by going outside. Booking areas are right next to the dispatcher area, which is right on top of the conference area. The building should be remodeled to make it more efficient. Anybody's going to be surprised when I say we're not simply going to remodel the facility. It's going to be a new facility and I would say that that would be a good jump off point for the planning board to see whether or not those issues are being addressed. I do note however, like the Department of Public Works, which we'll get to in a moment, we did not have a floor plan for the police department. I suspect, although I have not had anyone tell me this, but I suspect at least when I've been involved with these in the past with regard to police facilities, that the reason we don't have a floor plan is for security purposes. That's still, I, I think we can still at least confirm that those items that were addressed in the master plan have hopefully been addressed without, without a specific location. Are more storage? Are the areas separated so they're not on one on top of one another? Have we resolved the issues of access to jail cells by not having to go outside? With regard to the Department of Public Works building, again at page sixteen of our reexamination report, it's noted that, I just jumped out, I don't know if anybody can still see me.
Yes, Rich is sharing his screen, you can, we can see you.
Wonderful, perfect. With the Public Works Department, as with the Police Department building, the Department of Public Works building is becoming functionally obsolete. So again, my role here is to take a look at what's being done, see how things are being improved. I would, and I, earlier I had an opportunity to read an email from our chair. I, I would treat it similar to the types of things you're looking at for site plan. How does the site work? What area is it in? What type of neighborhood is it in? If it's in a residential neighborhood, what are we doing to make sure that the impact of this facility and its operations will impact upon the, the quality of life for the residential areas? And moving forward, as I said, we can make recommendations to the governing body, get that input from their professionals, see how this plan has now been addressed on a go-forward basis and in a sense, hopefully when these things get done, we have two things we can check off on our reexamination report. Anything else?
Thank you Doug. So in specifically reviewing the section of the MLUL, I made a few notes. What we're supposed to be reviewing is the location, the character and the extent of the project. At the end of this process, the planning board will be asked to put together a series of recommendations, which Doug will write up and those recommendations will be passed along to the governing body. The standard for what we're doing tonight is not consistent with standards for variances. The standard is simply a test of reasonableness. And so the process is about understanding the decisions that the governing body is making and proposing to put forward. And our assessment is whether or not the proposed plans fit within our overall zone plan and the impact on the surrounding properties and to the extent that there's concerns about the impact, the assessment of alternatives. So I think that's the scope of, of what it is that we're supposed to be doing. Does anybody have any questions before we get started? Can we please make a note for the record that Mr. Bordelon has arrived and note that he was tardy by ten minutes?
He reflected in his pay.
Permanent fine. Teresa, I assume you're going to act as our master of ceremonies, so maybe you can help the, introduce the, the, the governing bodies representatives here today and, and help us understand kind of where we're going, where we've been and the, the plans before us tonight.
Okay, um, thank you Todd. On behalf of the mayor and council and the borough's facilities committee, I just want to make a few brief comments that highlights a series of key dates showing how we got to this point in time. In the spring of two thousand and sixteen, this all began with the borough governing body authorizing a building facilities, facility study, which was conducted by Kaplan-Gott, the Sands Architectural Firm. In the fall of two thousand and sixteen, the governing body appointed a facilities planning committee, which included members of the governing body, planning board, borough staff and professionals. In November of seventeen, after a extensive process of review and proposals, borough appointed Eli Goldstein with the Goldstein Partnership as the borough's architectural firm for the facilities improvements. From October eighteen through nineteen, we reviewed various site plan and design locations for PD and Borough Hall. In two thousand, in November of two thousand and nineteen, the initial DPW site plan was presented to the planning board. In most of two thousand and twenty, the review of various facilities options continued, but it was slowed by COVID nineteen. In the fall of two thousand and twenty, the mayor and council expanded the borough's facilities committee to include additional community members, each with their own respective expertise. In December twenty twenty, the governing body additionally authorized a facilities bond ordinance to completely fund the DPW and the PD building projects. And from January twenty twenty-one to the present, the expanding facilities committee has been meeting regularly with the borough professionals and other committees, including our historical committee and the borough's green team to review various facility details. We will begin tonight's presentation with the police department building, noting that the decision to rebuild a new police department on Fifth Street as well as draft plans that we presented by the various borough professionals tonight are a result of a great deal of thought, time, public input and professional expertise. The borough's facilities committee wanted to proceed with the planning board capital review process at this time so they can consider the input of this very knowledgeable local body before authorizing our architects team to move forward with more detailed plans. As Todd noted earlier, the planning board does have other administrative actions, actions listed on tonight's agenda. As such, depending on time considerations, we may not be able to present both the PD and DPW plans this evening. If that is the case, the DPW building plans will be presented at future meeting. I'd like to introduce the borough's architect, Eli Goldstein. His support team include Rick Adelson and also Luke Butler, who are a part of the site plan and engineering firms. Now we'll turn it over now to Eli Goldstein.
Thank you Teresa, and I actually, I'd like to start by thanking everybody for giving us this opportunity to speak to you tonight. And I think it might be most beneficial if Rick Adelson, our site engineer, were to start by sharing his screen and walking you through the proposed site plan for the police building. Rick? And you're on mute.
I am not on mute anymore, I hope.
Yep.
You should be able to see my screen, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that is working. Okay, so what you're looking at is the cover sheet for this application, for, for the PD project. I'm going to actually, are we doing, how do you want to handle exhibits, Mr. Counsel?
As you get to it, let's mark it, I'm probably going to mirror the exhibit number that you have in the lower right-hand corner. I would ask you to identify what that is.
So I am showing what I, what we named as exhibit one, EX one. Exhibit one is a Google bird's eye view of the neighborhood where the existing police department is located. You have the park in the foreground, you have the police department in Fisk Street in the middle of the page, Maple to the right to the east and Locust diagonally across the street to the west. What you'll see is the existing building and a twenty-eight car parking lot. Building is set back, but located well within the neighborhood. You'll also see the basketball court and the tennis courts immediately behind the existing police station. Going back to our site plan documents, looking at sheet C two of the package that was submitted, you're looking at a site plan from the survey, excerpt from the survey of the existing site. Again, you'll see the existing police building. You'll see, see the twenty-eight car parking lot to the west of the police building. And again, right behind that, you have the basketball court, you have residences to the west and the church to the east. Moving forward, you'll see our, you have our proposed site layout for the police building. You'll see that we have a, backing up one page here, you'll notice that the existing police lot has only a single access point from Fisk Street, which tends to be problematic because somebody could actually block the police in if they so chose. So usually when we design police buildings and we've done a number of these, we like to provide two means of egress, egress to make that more difficult. So if you look at the proposed plan on sheet C three, you'll see a parking lot with a driveway around the building to provide the second means of egress from the lot and thirty-three parking spaces, including two handicap parking spaces. You'll notice that we have sidewalks all the way around the building. We have handicap ramps coming across, can you see my mouse?
Yes.
Okay, yes, handicap ramps coming across the front of the building and we have a sidewalk along the west side to provide access to the park. In the southeast corner of the lot, we have a proposed generator and a dumpster pad and enclosure. Moving ahead to site grading, recognizing that these are still schematic plans. We, we had, these are advanced schematic plans. Where we stopped was when we were ready, we thought we had enough to show the board for design input rather than coming back with complete, coming with complete plans and then having to rework things in their entirety. So recognize that there's information that is not provided on here by intentionally, because the plans have not advanced to that level. So looking.
Let me just mention something real quick. So can you point out the footprint of the existing building in the plan?
Of the existing building, the existing building is located again to the east and being outlined, but with my mouse.
Right, so the, for the board's benefit, it's important to recognize that the, one of the parameters that we're trying to deal with was to keep the existing building in operation until the new building is complete. And so, since they're both occupying the same lot and the lot's not that big, it was very important to carefully arrange the location of the new building central to the site so we can get some buffering around the perimeter, but still far enough away from the existing footprint that the new building could be built at the same time as the existing building is operating and is occupied. Thanks Rick.
Thanks. Okay, just a couple dimensional numbers for you. The existing building, the proposed building is set back about twenty-nine and a half feet. Just for reference, the house next door is at about thirty-two feet. The R, we are located, we're in the PB's district, which is the public building district. So there is not specific dimensional zoning requirements in the PB district. However, we are adjacent to the R five. In the R five, we're talking about lot areas, five thousand square feet, minimum with a fifty square, fifty, minimum with a fifty feet, minimum depth of a hundred, front yard setback twenty-five, rear yard thirty, side yards of seven and sixteen respectively for each, each and both sides.
I, I actually'd like to dig in there a little bit. Can we go back? I, I'm glad you hit it now because I was hesitant to interrupt, but I, I think in terms of figuring out where we are. Can we go back to the Google image, please?
Certainly.
So I, I think everybody is familiar with where the police station is. Are all the properties on all sides R five?
On the sides, but not across the street.
Across the, something.
Not across.
So the churches are five and these properties are R five across the street. Is.
Across the street is R.
Is also R five and then B one just down the block a little bit.
Okay, so all the properties in the direct vicinity of the building are in R five. So if we could go back to the site plan again, I'd like you to tell us what the requirements would be in an R five and how this lays out on top of that. We can do the building when we address the building, but if we could do it relative to the site layout, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
You mentioned the setback requirement's twenty-five and you're keeping it at twenty-nine and a half.
We are twenty-nine and a half, that is correct. Our side yard setback, the required, the required side yards would be seven and sixteen. We are proposed at thirty-one and I don't know, sixty-five or seventy on the east side. So significantly further on the east side and thirty-one feet on the west side. Rear yard setback is thirty in the R five and we are, depending upon how you measure it, again forty-five or fifty feet.
And you mentioned the minimum lot dimensions in R five being fifty by a hundred. What are the dimensions of this lot, please?
This lot is a hundred and sixty, a hundred and fifty-five feet wide by a nominal depth of a hundred and sixty-one with a piece that extends back deeper where the lot extends back to the south.
And how far is it to the area that's being developed, the, the practical depth?
The practical depth is about a hundred and sixty-one feet.
Thanks.
Okay. So I covered that, lot coverage, so the building footprint is, the other, other dimensions, building footprint is allowed, is about thirty-seven hundred square feet, which is about twelve point seven percent building coverage. The R five allows for thirty-five percent building coverage. Comparing there, where we don't compare well is on lot coverage, lot coverage on an R five is supposed to be fifty percent. We are more than that at sixty-two percent driven by the need for the parking spaces for the police department.
Is there a minimum requirement or a practical requirement? How does that, you explained to us the second entrance, which makes a lot of sense. But are there other requirements that you're trying to meet when you, when you provide the extra coverage?
We are, again, the existing police station has twenty-eight parking spaces. We are providing similar number of parking spaces to that they asked for as many as we could get. So we got it, we were able to put in thirty-one spaces. Their existing twenty-eight include one handicap space, which is inadequate, should be two handicap spaces. Our thirty-one, our, our thirty-three spaces includes two, or have two handicap spaces, which give us thirty-one effective, so, so very similar numbers. We picked up a couple extra spaces for them, which is what they had asked for. Did that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Moving ahead to the grading plan. What we are doing with site grading is we are maintaining a flat plateau around the building. So we are sloping up to that plateau in the first, the thirty, thirty, thirty-five feet of the site. We have the handicap parking at the side of the, on the west side of the, on the east side of the building, which gives us handicap access to the front door. We have a sidewalk to the front with a couple stairs to give us access from the street. We also have an accessible route from the street on the west side utilizing the sidewalk to the playground where we have a landing and a crosswalk also with a ramp up. Once we get to the parking lot, the parking lot is generally relatively flat, except for the rear where we slope up to the park to meet the existing grades. We do have about four, four to five feet of grade change across the site, so we are fighting with that to keep the flat, the plateau for the building itself. We need to meet, have a flat plateau because we need a Sallyport for access for transfer of prisoners, which occurs near the midpoint on the rear of the building, towards the rear of the building. Stormwater management on this site, we anticipate that this is going to be a porous pavement. As you're going to hear about later on your stormwater presentation and your rule adoptions, we are trying to, we are cognizant of the new stormwater rules and this project will comply within the stormwater rules. We will have a porous pavement and utilize the green infrastructure to the extent that's practical on the site. Primarily will be porous pavement here. Porous pavement will allow us to mitigate time of concentration by allowing the water to permeate into the pavement and slow the water flow down. It will also discharge the water into the ground, which is consistent with the new stormwater rules.
Yeah, are, are we going to hear a separate discussion with regard to the stormwater analysis and, and what the pervious pavement does to the numbers given the over, the overage?
I, I can tell you that the design will be mitigated so that will have reduced the, the post-flow rainfall to fifty percent, twenty, fifty percent of the two-year storm, seventy-five percent of the ten-year, sorry, and eighty percent of the hundred. At this point, we have not done a full design of the stormwater system. You'll notice there are no inlets shown for, for connections of anything. The building roof will go in, but the numbers should be relatively similar. We, we can mitigate them and enforce that, because we're working with, basically, we are mitigating to the existing conditions.
You mentioned a significant change in grade, which I'm not familiar with. Which direction does that go right now and are there any existing drainage problems in the neighborhood?
Not familiar with any existing drainage problems. The grade in front of the building is at about elevation twenty-two. The grade in the back is on the playground is at about elevation twenty-seven and change. So it's front to back right now. It does slope up, there are some smaller tanning walls, there are some steeper slopes. There are some steeper slopes transitioning to the west. And there's actually a relatively steep slope in the front lawn of the police station right now. The police station's kind of up on a hill right now.
Can I ask you about the path on the westerly side?
Yes.
How wide is the path and what is the hard black line that's immediately adjacent to it?
I can do that, go back, sorry, wrong way. So the path is a four-foot wide sidewalk, presumably concrete, and we have a small segmental block wall. It'll be about eighteen to twenty-four inches high along the side to aid in the transition. Again, we are, we're, we're lower because of the maintain, maintaining the building grade. So we're, we're forcing ourselves and we have a small, a small, a small segmental block retaining wall on that property line or along the sidewalk, that ten feet from the property line.
So this, this area is highly trafficked by children and I really can't put enough emphasis on that. Four feet strikes me as particularly narrow and what I'm looking at at the other side of that, the line for the block wall is a lot of green space. Were thoughts given to providing a more robust access, moving that wall out, recognizing that you're going to have a fair amount of traffic coming through there almost at all times of the day?
We had that at five feet and we actually narrowed it when we started looking at impervious coverage, but we certainly could widen it to five feet with very little effort. That would be fine. I don't think I'd want to make it much bigger than five feet. We are constrained in the rear as we get to the back, where, where we go around the bend. We are actually, we're actually five feet along that back section already. But we could, we could certainly make that a five-foot walk.
I'll be interested to hear if there's any more attention to it, but it's, in, in my view, based on how my kids have used this, that could be a thoroughfare and it's not going to be too much for the. That could be a thoroughfare and it's not going to be too much for the amount of traffic that'll go back and forth. I'm not fully familiar with the challenges of the site, but anyway, we can, we can move on and talk about that later.
Oh, let's see, where am I going? Let's go to site lighting. Site lighting. Recognizing that we are in a residential neighborhood, but still balancing the need for light for a police station. We have looked at downlight fixtures, obviously. So we are using a small downlighting LED fixture. As the primary later, as poles, poles are mounted at fourteen-foot height. So we are respecting the height of the neighborhood and keeping those as low as we, as reasonable. We also have some wall packs. And on, on the building, again, relatively low, those are only at eight foot in height right now. And we also have a couple of bollards, some downlights and some canopies. And we have, we utilize step lights in the wall to maintain light levels on the. Sidewalk along the retaining wall on the west side. So looking at that, we have relatively uniform lighting ranging from about a half a foot candle is the low in the middle of the lot. To, I don't know, two, two and a half occasional threes on the pavement under the hotspots for the lights. We got, we got fairly nice lighting with relatively low light, light fixture heights. We were relatively pleased with this.
So let me ask the question like a layperson, recognizing that we're putting a twenty-four, seven building in a residential neighborhood. Granted, it's already there. Are there any additional sensitivities that could be built into the lighting design than what we've already done? Or are we maximizing the practical solutions to that light spillage that are available in the market?
We are maximizing the. Practical, the practical solutions with spillage, we're using fairly modern, high-tech fixtures that are very sharp cutoffs. In look, in consideration to spillage, we have, we were less concerned about spillage to the church side than we were to the residential side. If you look at our light levels along the residential side. We're, you know, barely spilling here. And that's before you consider the landscaping that goes in along that property line is a, which is, gets a hedgerow, which we'll see in a second. We have, we, we relate, we, we needed more light on the sidewalk rather than looking at higher light solutions. We opted for the. The step lights into the wall because those are low and directional, so that should control the, that obviously only throws the light onto the walk and doesn't throw anything back towards the residences. So we were very, very cognizant of this. And again, we have one bollard at the front, just because again, we didn't want to put a pole and we didn't want to flip the pole. We could have easily accomplished lighting this area by taking this pole and moving it to the other side and look this whole thing. However, that would have spilled a great deal of light onto the neighboring property and we opted not to take that, to, to move in that direction. So. I, I think we've done a very good job controlling spillage by using low light, very sharp cutoff fixtures, downlights. Modern LED fixtures and low, low mounting heights. By the way, we chose a fourteen-foot mounting height instead of like a twelve-foot mounting height. Is because in my experience, if you go much lower than fourteen feet, the plow trucks have a habit of clipping the pole heads and we try to avoid that.
Real quick, your spillage is indicated by your big circles around your lights on the drawing.
The pole, the, no, the spillager is indicated by the, the spot elevations. The circles are the one-foot candle trace around the fixture.
Okay, thanks. And will any of these be motion detectors or is this site lit up, lit up all night?
I would assume being that it's a twenty-four, seven operation. That it would not be motion detector controlled. That would probably be annoying for somebody if their lights coming on and off. Periodically, it could be a high lows, the lights are capable of being high-low fixtures. They are capable of being programmed to be motion detectors, but I would assume that they stay on.
How does this compare to the current light situation? Is it like, what can you give a rough percentage of how much more light is being generated by the new configuration and the new building?
I'm afraid I have never been to the police station at night. Been, been to many other buildings in town at night, but not the police station. So I, I can't give you an act, a comment on that.
Is, is Rich in a position to respond to that comment or question?
I mean, obviously I've been to the police station at night, but I, we haven't done any, you know, light level analysis to see what's there. I think a lot of the lighting has kind of. Like through the years, it's more of a. It's been swapped out. There's no, it hasn't really been designed and laid out accordingly, like a site plan like this. There's some wall packs. There might be some old, I think a Cobra head or two in the site, but other than that, we haven't done any analysis.
So, so the broad question is, you know, Rich, do you think that, I mean, to the extent you feel comfortable, is it safe to say this is going to be better than what's there now?
It's going to be better from a safety standpoint, but it's also going to be better because it's efficient. And of the sharp downlighting as our engineer had talked about. While maintaining the lighting within the site and not spilling it out onto the neighbors. You know, into the east or the west and even in the park area for that matter.
And, and I mean, once we select a location of a pole and a height, those things are set, but are these lights adjustable? I mean, once we get this thing in place, if it seems like it's brighter than needed to keep people safe, is it possible to adjust them?
Rick, what's the wattage? And I, I haven't dove into the, the actual. Specifications on the lighting here.
So the poles are. The poles are about eighteen hundred lumens. Unfortunately, watts don't mean anything these days, at least not to me. So we're talking about about eighteen hundred lumens on the main poles. The. What you call it. So in most places. We have a couple of that are a little higher at four thousand, but in general, we're relatively low wattage fixtures. Recognize that a hundred and fifty watt bulb is about fifteen hundred lumens if I'm not mistaken. Just for comparison. So we're really not particularly high. Certainly not, nothing higher than we'd expect. And again, we, we push the light levels down to control the hotspots. So we were using the smaller, lower, lower output fixtures to control the hotspots. I know, as to answer the question, Chairman, I believe you can, the plates are, the fixtures are programmable. I don't know whether you can program a maximum level. I know you can program setback levels, so I would not be surprised if you can program a maximum level if you needed to. I would think that if we wanted to do that, I would want it to lower the light levels. I'd rather do it by changing the fixtures. The fixtures more efficient life-wise if you use it at its designed output.
So, so just to be clear, there's no question that this needs to be lit up in order to be safe, no question. But we have seen instances where things that look okay on paper in reality, aren't so okay. And you know, it's, it's difficult to go back. So that, you know, for example, I mean, this is a piece of paper with a lot of numbers on it. It's hard to really understand the impact of what some of the choices are. That's why the, the general statements that we've been as efficient as we can be and we think we've got it tuned in or to the extent that it's adjustable matters. Because we know that we're not quite as locked in and we're doing as best we can. That's all.
I don't mean to get ahead because I think this is on the next slide, but the landscaping, you know, could help mute the light in, in ways. And I think it's, I think you would be getting to this on the next slide, but you'd like, there's a fairly developed landscaping effort here to provide screening.
We, we have an advanced schematic landscape plan and I can, why don't we flip to that so we can talk to that and then we'll come back here if we'd like. So. Our landscape architects have come out with a plant mass, a landscape massing plan. And you'll see that we have screaming, screening around the perimeter of the site. Low plantings in front of the retaining walls in front of the building. Where we're hiding slope, where we're hiding the sloping walls for the handicap, for the ramps. Trees along the street, trees in the front yard, trees where we can place them in the corner there. And then again, some shrubs against the building in the front. Presumably evergreen, evergreen plantings as our border plantings for screens. Again, plant material has not been selected yet just by virtual where we are in design.
Look, I realize that I've already mentioned this, but I feel like I have to mention it again. This, this access for the kids is not wide enough. You can't pass two bikes and when you landscape all this, it's going to be even tighter. And you've got a direct travel lane there. I know that's probably not going to be the primary access, but I'm very concerned. That these kids are going to be in that driveway unnecessarily because we're not providing enough space for them.
Okay. We have room, as I said, we are set back. If you think six foot isn't appropriate dimension, we could push it to six foot. We just compromise the landscaping a little bit to get there. So we really can't shift the building. We can't, we're, we're really constrained with separation between the buildings. As Mr. Goldstein said earlier, so that we can maintain the police station open during construction. So shifting the building isn't an option. So to, to accommodate a wider sidewalk, we really just have to narrow the landscaping, which is very doable.
One follow-up tree question, any, or any significant specimen trees being removed in, in this project and then obviously being replaced, but.
Can I join in on that one?
Why don't you introduce yourself, Chris?
Hi, my name is Chris Rodriguez. I'm a councilperson in Fairhaven, New Jersey. I'm also one of the leads on the facilities committee and a recovering shade tree commissioner. Kidding aside. I know it's hard on, on Zoom because everybody's on mute, so I know everybody was laughing hysterically. I don't believe there are any specimen trees at all on the property. I've walked it a few times. We, we can double check that Dave, so, and we will, but the current property doesn't feature any. Any, any trees that are. You know, a protected class of tree.
Yeah, I was just thinking from a, like a net, just looking at the landscaping design, it looks like there's a lot more trees going in than there probably are there.
That's correct.
That's, that's obviously a plus for the town and the shade tree commission.
Looking at the ortho photo, there's like, I believe there's one tree that's about under the S T in Fisk there in the street. That is getting removed. There are a couple of other little smaller trees that are getting removed. I wouldn't consider any of them specimens, but I'll. Defer to the council minister, former shade tree commissioner. I think that's really all I have for direct testimony at this point. If there's questions, happy to answer them. If not, I'll let Eli talk about the building. Eli will talk about the building and then we can answer questions together.
Rick, pass the sharing over to me, alright?
I will stop my share. All yours.
Thank you. Okay, so can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so what we've done here is we have. Built a model, computer model of the proposed building massing and superimposed it on a sort of. Developed Google map to give some sense of the scale of the new building compared to the scale of the surrounding buildings. So in this, in the surrounding zone, the residential zone. The maximum building height is thirty feet. And we're proposing. A building whose ridge height is going to be about thirty-two feet. So it's just slightly over the maximum for the district. And this is the view from the northwest, looking at our building and then beyond it, behind it. The ball field property and then to its left, the church. And here you can see the entrance from Fisk goes around the back and then the exit. On the west side. We're proposing to use residential, in addition to using residential massing, gable roofs and. Residential scale windows, we're planning to use siding, clapboard siding. For the majority of the facades, some sort of stone or masonry base along the bottom all the way around. And with the goal that the scale of the building. And the materials on it relate as closely as possible to the district it's in. So. In some sense, you can almost think of it as a large house rather than as a, a police building. We have the need for significant fresh air intake and exhaust. So we've actually put chimneys out in the building, which will be used for bringing air in and out. Into the equipment, the mechanical equipment, which will be in the attic. Although the building looks like it's two stories high, it's actually going to be three because there's a full basement. Earlier, I believe the attorney talked about the issue of why we're not showing you plans. I do want to confirm that that's for security reasons. But I can describe in general, the organization of the building. The basement is going to be primarily a large storage room for municipal and police archives. The first floor is primarily a public entrance and lobby interview areas. Police offices and the Sally port and adjacent detention area. And the second floor is meeting and conference rooms and police locker and shower rooms. If we take a moment now and look at the elevations, you can see here that. Let's start on the north. This is now facing Fisk Street. You can see again the base and the siding and the upper part of the facade. The west side facing the adjacent house. I should go back to the front for a minute. The staircases, the two stairs are in the side cables. So on the west side, this is one of the stairs and on the east side, this is the other. And then the offices are ring the, the, much of the sides and back portion. And then the Sally port is here facing east, large garage door. We have asphalt shingle roofing, although we are considering the use of recycled plastic shingles to make the building even more. Sustainable than it might otherwise be. It's going to be highly energy efficient. As Rick mentioned, it's going to be fully accessible. It's going to be much more functional than the current building. It's larger, but also arranged in a more functional manner. And it's also more flexible in that the spaces on the second floor, especially the conference room are set up that they can be multifunction, multipurpose rooms. There's going to be a lot of daylight inside the building, a lot of windows. And again, we think for most directions, the scale and materials will be similar in scale and materials to the nearby residences.
Safe to assume the exterior materials, all the maintenance free, you're going to use AZAC and Hardy and that kind of thing?
Exactly. Correct. Yep.
I, I want to compliment you on keeping the ridge height at thirty-two feet. And as you look at the building from the front elevation, I can see that the, that the cross section is probably closer to thirty, which I think is really important in terms of making the building fit in. But my other question, because we don't really know the size of the building. I know that there are certain requirements, state or federal or whatever they are for what needs to be in this building. And I think I heard that the footprint was thirty-seven hundred. Can you, can you help us with the total square footage and? And how that sits on the lot and what those numbers look like relative to our zoning standards?
Well, first, the overall building, all three floors put together is almost exactly ten thousand square feet. The first, the basement and the first floor are each about thirty-seven hundred and the top floor is slightly smaller as you can see here. Set back on the sides and the back. As far as the. Footprint, let me just pull out the standard for a moment. Footprint, let me just pull out the standard for a moment.
While you're doing that, I'll just comment that we don't include a cellar. And that assumes that more than fifty percent of the basement is underground, which it appears to be based on what I understand the grade to be. So that first thirty seven hundred comes right off the top. So we would be looking at sixty three hundred if it's a ten. Thirty seven hundred in the footprint and then maybe the balance is in the second floor.
Correct. Exactly. So the maximum habitable floor area in square feet in this district is twenty two hundred. And then I believe Mr. Anderson went through all the setbacks.
Mr. Chair, are you talking about the floor area ratio?
I wasn't, I was speaking more generally, but I, I, just to, just to acknowledge what Mr. Wilson just said. With regard to the cap, you know, that's a maximum square footage based on the presumption that we're dealing with a fifty by a hundred foot lot or something similar. What you have here is in excess of three times what the minimum lot size would be. But I do think that the floor area ratio would be more instructive in helping us understand how this would feel on the lot. So yes, that number would be helpful.
So the, if you're looking at, I mean, I believe your ordinance includes a point four floor area ratio for the overall site. I don't have that in front of me, but it may.
That's correct.
The, the lot area itself is twenty nine, one twenty seven, point four times that gets us to just a hair under. If my phone would wake back up, I could read the number eleven, eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty. So the building is significantly under that. If you exclude the basement from that floor area ratio calculation, so you.
Yeah, so that would only include the first and the second floor, and that would be maxed at forty. So do you have the math as to what the floor area ratio would work out? Relative to the twenty nine thousand square foot lot size?
If you give me a second, I do.
Sixty three hundred divided by twenty nine, one twenty seven.
Sixty three hundred?
Yeah.
Point two.
Point two.
Point two, point two, one.
So just to give everyone a frame of reference, if this lot were in a different zone, if this lot were in, say, you know, R thirty. It would have a floor area ratio limitation that would be closer to twenty. I don't have a zoning schedule in front of me. But you know, to the extent that it's all relative, if you think about it that way, that doesn't necessarily make it fit in any better with what's around it. But you do that with appropriate setbacks. You do that by having a ridge height that's consistent with the buildings around it. And, and I know that Mr. Goldstein, that there have been discussion, this project far from started today. In other meetings, public meetings that I attended where there was discussion about what the requirements were for this station. Can you help us understand, you know, what, what requirements are imposed on you and kind of where you may have done things to accommodate those requirements?
Sure. So the police buildings are highly regulated by the state. For example. Any, the detention facilities for detainees, for the handling of detainees, for the housing of detainees. Are all regulated by the State Department of Corrections. And, and that mandates that there be a secure garage so that. Police vehicles can actually pull into the building and load and unload detainees. And that the detainees can actually be moved into a processing area and then. If there are cells into cells, and we're planning to have two cells here. The sizes and the materials of the cells are regulated, the, the, the. Ventilation and lighting and, and audio and video control of them is all regulated. So that takes care of the, the detention suite, we'll call it. Then as of about ten or fifteen years ago, the state imposed all sorts of special requirements on interview facilities. And if you have a room in which anybody's going to be interviewed, there are very strict requirements on the acoustics. And on the electronic recording of those interviews for evidentiary purposes. Speaking of evidentiary purposes, there's, there are strict requirements for the handling of evidence. And so in the building, we have an evidence storage room, evidence lockers to, to control the. Chain of custody and the handling of evidence. In addition, there are guidelines and recommendations in terms of the interface between the public and the. Dispatcher or receptionist, for lack of a better word. So that when visitors come to the building, they'll come to a window that will be bullet resistant. Now, because this, even though this building is operating in theory twenty four seven, there won't necessarily be a. Person standing or operating out of the dispatch room in the middle of the night. Currently and in the future, when this new building is finished, if people come in the middle of the night for help or advice. They will be coming into lobby and picking up a phone, which will tie them into the county police. Because the county provides backup when the desk here is not occupied, even during the day. And so all of those switchovers and the security systems that go with them are all built into the infrastructure of the building. Because we are on grade here and we wanted to keep the building as low as possible. We have offices on the first floor, as you can see these windows here. We purposely elevated the first floor of the building about a foot and a half above the surrounding grade. So that these windowsills would be just above eye level in case somebody was walking on the sidewalk right against the building. Because we didn't want to look right in and see what's on the desks of the officers working there. So there's some subtle adjustments and things going on in terms of the heights of things to provide, to maintain security. And still keep the building somewhat friendly in this appearance from the surrounding neighborhood. The, as I mentioned, there's a training room on the second floor, which is not only going to be used for training, in-house training. But also is going to host visitors from other police departments. And so the vertical circulation and control in the building is carefully. Set up the stairs and the way the elevator works so that visitors can be accompanied up there. And if there's an emergency, they can exit without going into the more secure areas of the building. Similarly, it's set up so that if municipal employees have to get to the archives in the basement. They can come into the lobby and take the elevator to the basement and get to the municipal archives without entering the secure areas of the police department. So there's some very complex, three dimensional circulation zoning that's built into the building in order to make that happen. Does that answer your question?
Early. Thank you. What's the ceiling height in the basement?
It's average is about nine feet.
Was there anything that you wanted in this design that we didn't get? Or did we get all the things that, obviously we got all the things that were required to have? I, I like the idea of the records room. Were there, were there any other things that we sought that we decided not to do because of the limitations on the site?
I guess, one thing I can say just from having been designing police buildings for a long time, having designed a lot of them. Small police departments operate optimally if you get them all on one floor. And obviously because of the constraints of the site, that would have been, there wouldn't have been enough parking left. Given that we were trying to also keep the existing building running. And so we went through a number of careful studies in consultation with the police chief. To make sure that the functions that we put on the second floor are things that. By putting them up there, they don't compromise the functionality of the, of the rest of the facility. And that's why. Much of the second floor is taken up by things like the locker rooms and the shower rooms, which. Don't have to be accessed frequently in the same way that areas like. The detective suite and the patrol division have to be. And so. That all worked out, but it took a lot of discussion to identify those things and to make sure we could still fit everything that had to be on the first floor. On the first floor.
One more question for you. I, I didn't see signage on the site plan and we haven't talked about signage. What kind of signage is going to be on site?
I would assume we have a sign that says police station. I would assume there's traffic control signage. We have not discussed that committee yet. So I don't have formal guidance on that yet. Eli, do you want to talk about green, green features of the building at all?
Yes, so. As, as I mentioned before, we're at the point where we're starting to close in on material selections and so. For example, as I mentioned earlier, we might use recycled. Plastic roof shingles. The building is going to be highly insulated with probably R thirty or more in the roofs. As of a couple of years ago, the building code has gotten much tougher in terms of insulation in general. There's going to be a continuous layer of about two inches of continuous insulation outside the stud work. Right behind the cladding, which will run the full height of the building and then down around the basement. We'll use high performance glass in the windows. Probably clad wood windows. The air conditioning, heating and ventilating air conditioning systems that will be in the attic will be high performance systems with. Careful zoning so that we're not conditioning the entire building in the middle of the night. And, and Rick can talk about some of the site, he's already mentioned somebody, may have some others to talk about some of the. Sustainable site features that are being considered.
So on, on the site side, we've already talked about the porous pavement. And the detention field below the pavement for stormwater management. We've talked about the LED light fixtures, downlighting. Obviously landscaping will be native and non-invasive speech species to the maximum extent practical. For this. Low water consumption as well. There is also, Eli, you want to go back to your rendering?
Yeah.
You'll notice in the rendering, there is the possibility that we wind up with. A solar array covering the handicap parking space, I'm sorry, the parking spaces along the. South side of the parking lot. That's still being evaluated for economics to see whether it's a large enough array to make sense.
Guys, I apologize for cutting in, but question about the parking. Was the, what was the impetus? And I apologize if I missed this, but what was the impetus to go from the regular two-way flow that exists in the parking lot now? To the one-way flow around the building and part B of that question is. If there were, if you were to go to a one-way flow and, and you know, the, the, similar to the current model. While still using the space in the back for parking spaces, you could actually address. A thruway for the kids, you know, the kid traffic on that, on that west side of the building. That would, that, that could be an opportunity to make an actual, you know, relatively nice path that would, that would, you know. Sort of create a, you know, a community feel around the building as well. And I'm, I'm sure this is something that's been studied and talked about, so sorry for coming.
No problem. So we, we did talk about that early on. The reasoning behind the two means of egress for the parking lot is to provide just that, two means of egress. It makes it more difficult for somebody to take a car and block a driveway and prevent. Vehicles from exiting the parking lot, which is what you could do easily right now. So you'd have to do that twice with this to prevent completely. Prevent people from exiting the lot. So it's pretty common in, in most modern police station designs. We always try to achieve two means of egress out of the parking lot. As far as circulation, the parking lot on the east side of the building is two directional. It doesn't need to be one directional. It's a full twenty four foot drive aisle, ninety degree parking. It's just the one-way driveway out on the west side. As a second means of egress.
And, and I know this is going to sound, I mean, so if the, if the two means of egress, I mean, it sounds like that's just sort of doctrine. But I look at the fair even police cars and there's, I think, almost all of them are SUVs and good just drive. I mean, it, it seems like somebody pulling up in front of the driveway and blocking the police cars from going out. Well, maybe again doctrine and part of the design, police stations all around, I just think you should drive. Over the, over the lawn, you know, if you're going to, if, if one car is not going to substantially stop that flow. But I just, you know, again, I, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about Todd's point that, that pass through. You know, also I've, I've used that, I've, you know, run through there to the park, you know, I, I think it is going to be, it's going to become something that needs to be thought about. Because a lot of kids do use that for the, for the north to south and south and north flow.
I have a question about the basketball court. So is the basketball court behind the solar panels? Is that, that's going to be a basketball court or?
It is now.
Right, so that stays.
The basketball court that is there will remain there.
Okay.
Rick, I just want to ask about the, the site plan again. Is there any room to the, to the east side? To nudge this and create more space? What, what's your setback of your parking spaces against your westerly?
Eli, you want to free up, you want to release your share so I can share mine? Should be in the top middle. Yeah. Flip to that share. Share. You got that?
Mick, before you start, let me just mention to someone who understands that one of the constraints here from the. In terms of the distance between the new building and the old building is that the new building. Has a basement and so the excavation, the hole for the basement. Is going to be quite a bit deeper than the footings on the west edge of the existing building. So. Every foot that we move the new building to the east makes it more and more expensive to deal with that. Relationship during construction, because you've got this big, deep hole next to an existing building. And it makes the construction on that interface, Ricky, you could sort of put your cursor in there.
Yeah. So we're only fourteen and a half foot clear and there's actually an area way that we need to work with on the side. So we're, we're, we're about, we're about, as I said, we're about, we've pushed this building as far east as we can for construction. But to answer the chairman's direct question earlier, we are only five point three feet off the property line. At the north corner of the parking lot and we're also working to respect the existing radio antenna that stays in place. On the southern side of that lot. So we're constrained there. So we're really, we, we really can't move this any further to the east.
It was immediately apparent when you pulled it up, given the existence of the existing building, that what I was thinking wasn't going to work. I'm on to my fifth idea. What is the width of the drive aisle on the west side?
I was going to offer that. It's, it's, it's a fifteen foot drive aisle. We could probably, you know. Pro, we could certainly go to fourteen. We'd have to talk to the town engineer and before we went to twelve. Twelve is tight for two cars passing. Fourteen would be about as narrow as I would go, I think.
It's one way. Why do you need two cars passing?
Just in case somebody parks along, just in case somebody parks, they run inside and want to be able to get past.
All right. So I, I think we'll have an opportunity to see what other people think about it. But I, my last comment on this is that I think you have a lot of property there. I know you've got grading issues. I would like to see something large, inviting and safe for kids to move from the north to the south. That is, that works and I don't know how to do it, but I, I, I know what I see doesn't look right. And, and that's, that's nitpicking because I, I, you know, there's obviously been a lot of thought in this plan and I, I don't want to belabor that point. I know that the idea here is that these ideas are being presented for feedback. There's not a lot of places for me personally to think about feedbacks. I think this is all very well thought through. But why don't we move to whatever's left of the presentation and make sure that we keep it moving?
Todd, can I jump in real quick?
Yeah, please, Jim.
Did you guys just, out of curiosity here, because we keep talking about, we can't move the new building because the existing building, so on and so forth. Did you guys consider trailers? Like the Oceanport Police were in trailers for years.
Yes, in fact, well, we, we were the architects for the new Oceanport facility and we absolutely considered trailers. We considered all sorts of different approaches here and in our discussions with the facilities committee. After looking at all the options, the costs and benefits. And in our discussions with the facilities committee, after looking at all the options, the costs and benefits. The decision was made that it would be least disruptive and most economical to, if we could find a way to do it. To keep the existing building in operation while the new building's under construction.
Okay. You're, you're not left with, with an illogical plan, I mean, when I first looked at this, it made total sense. You build in the parking lot, the, you put the parking lot where the old building was, there's a lot of logic to it. I think, I think that, you know, but for this issue of this path, you know, it seems to work.
We, we can accommodate, we can increase the width of that path without overly compromising. I am guessing I can steal, as I said, I can steal a foot out of that driveway. I can easily steal off another foot out of the, the landscape area that will give us a six foot wide sidewalk. I think that adequately addresses the concern.
Rick, just a question for you, Rick. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I, I'm going to. Is there any way or does the, does the board have any thoughts about this? Is there any way to put the sidewalk for the kids right on the property line?
Exactly, exactly.
Move the landscaping inward.
I, 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 I need to, to defer on that question until we have additional topo. And overlap on that, I don't know the answer to that question, we're, we're, the surveyors got delayed with the snows. So they didn't get out there to get the extra survey topo we need. So until we have that, I can't answer that question at this point.
Okay.
Are we still going to address the stormwater, because that really is a, a concern I have right now. I love the idea of keeping the existing building and, you know, building a new one on a parking lot, I think it's a great idea. But just looking at the plan, I'm just seeing a lot of impervious space and I understand you're doing the porous. You know, the porous blacktop, which I'm sure will help a lot. But I'm still just have, have some concerns about, you know, the ability of percolation down to absorb through that porous blacktop. Cause it just looks like right now there's a lot of impervious space, so are we going to talk about storm management? Or that will be saved for a later conversation?
Oh, the, as I said, the stormwater management will be handled in accordance with the DAP rules, which are the new DAP rules coming out. DAP rules now heavily favor porous pavement for water quality. And also for retention and recharge. We have not done a full soils investigation on this property yet that is scheduled for the beginning of April. But based, based on what we know about the property across the street, whereas we have done investigations on the DPW lot. We expect that we can get percolation. The DAP rules basically say if you don't get percolation, you still use porous pavement, you still treat it. And you put sand drains underneath it and drain it to the drainage system, albeit slower. Than directly percolating or a little faster than directly percolating. But you still manage it through the porous pavement and you still get your water quality that way. So I'm very confident that we will satisfy stormwater rules comfortably on this. As I said, the upper lot is a, is relatively flat, one of the benefits of us designing it that way. Is it gives me opportunity to utilize as much of the areas I need for recharge and for porous pavement. We will stay away from the basement to the extent possible. So we don't, we'll have to look at stormwater mounting as well to make sure that we're not creating a mounting problem. So my guess is the majority of our recharge area. See if I can do this. Will be in here. And in here. We're probably a little further away from the building, but, so we have, so we have recharge fields under the pavement in that area. So we can control where we're recharging, again, away from the building, so we don't create a mounting problem for ourselves, don't create a mounting problem for our neighbors. So that will take, taken into consideration.
But do the stormwater rules require that you keep it at net zero or does it require that you improve it?
It requires it to be improved, this is, this will be a major development because we'll have more, we have more than two, two. More than ten thousand square feet of new vehicle traffic surface. And as you, I don't know whether you, you're familiar with the new stormwater rules. But the stormwater rules, what it used to say, that new impervious coverage. They've changed that to new vehicle traffic, vehicular traffic surface, which is anything you can park on. They've also changed the definition so that if you're changing the way it's connecting to the drainage system. In any way, shape or form, for instance, if you put a trench drain across a driveway. You have changed that and that, anything that was connected to it becomes new. So our drainage, our surface here will be considered as new surface. So we will be a major development and we will be getting our reductions to fifty percent of the two year. As I said, seventy five percent of the, of. Seventy five percent of the ten year and eighty percent of a hundred.
Is the underground detention like any other dry well? I mean, it's just, you know, either a concrete box or a perforated pipe with crushed stone, the same kind of system?
It's a sim, it's a similar system, it's a perfor, it'll, it'll be a porous pavement. Usually we provide, when we design these, we provide storm, we provide surface drains. To handle them in the event that the pavement gets overloaded, so we can get water into the system that way as well. And the storage is in the stone voids under the pavement. And as I said, if we don't have a high enough perk rate, you provide an undergrain system under the field.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the criticism of the system that I'm familiar with is that over time it clogs and it no longer perks. And you wind up with a lot of capacity that you can't use. Can you tie leaders from the building directly into that same system and is that?
Absolutely, yes, no, that is the plan. That is the plan and, and the desired guidance from DAP.
Mr. Borderline, any further, anything further on that, I, I feel much better knowing that the roof leaders are going to it.
Yeah, myself as well, I'm just curious, I know on some earlier plans, plans previously, not for this, but for other buildings that the board has looked at. There were cleanouts where we were able to address that, that problem of silt or whatever. Building up in the catch basins, is there, will there be a similar mechanism in these as well?
Typically in porous pavements, you provide observation ports. So you can see, so you can monitor the water levels within the porous pavement, so that we would, we would provide those, just may providing those as well.
Would there be a place though in case, like it had to be cleaned, like what we were talking, what Todd was just talking about? About in case it gets like built up or it gets too clogged up, that it, it doesn't really work as well anymore?
In- interestingly, the underground detention systems, which is usually how we do this. DAP is actually steering us away from those under the regulations. Quite honestly, I think it's short sighted on their part, but that is the direction the regulations are, are driving us. To the extent we're allowed to do that and that's an interesting question. We will provide some piping so we can, so we have access and we can flush it. But DAP's preference is not to, it moves the water through the system faster. And again, they're, they're trying to model the. Time, the time of concentration, reduce the time of concentrations with the new stormwater rules. That's one of their major objectives and by doing direct infiltration and reducing piping, they achieve that better.
Okay. Anything further?
I have a question. From, from the landscape design, it looks as if you're putting in some significant landscaping trees, hedges. You talked about some native plants, it looks like you'll have a lawn out in front of the. Police department, are you planning on any kind of sprinkler system, are you proposing any type of maintenance for those plantings?
We have not discussed whether we have irrigation on this project yet, as of yet. We would take guidance from the committee. For that. Current thinking is you tend to irrigate now to get your initial, your initial growth. And we design with more drought tolerant plantings so that we don't provide long term irrigation. That's the direction we would likely head unless we are giving guidance otherwise.
Okay, and I, I have one other question, how many actual entrances are there to the building?
Three, plus the Sally Port, three plus the Sally Port.
Right, and will residents have access through all three entrances or just through the main lobby? How does that work in terms of security?
The pub, public will only have access through the main lobby is my understanding.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so where you have your handicap parking. Those people who might use that parking would have to get out of their car and, and even though there's an entrance there, they would have to go around to the front of the building to enter the building?
That is correct.
Okay. And how will, who will have access to the two, it looks like one on the east and west side of the building?
Those are simply for the police department to come and go from the parking lot and in case of emergency to get out quickly.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, so do we have anything further that we want to present? What we're going to.
Questions to the chair.
Yeah, so just, just to lay out the sequence for everybody that, that people, I, I know we've got a, a lot of attendees, it's so great to see so many people participating tonight. We're going to exhaust questions from the planning board and then we're going to open to the public. And when we open to the public, we're going to use the raise hand feature. Members of the public can ask any questions or put forth any comments that they have. I also know that we have members, the facilities committee beyond Mr. Rodriguez and maybe even members of council. And so we, we can make some decisions there if there are questions that maybe they can answer and the board professional or the, the borough's professionals cannot. I'm sorry, Mr. Kovat.
I, I just have a couple of quick, quick questions, I, I hope we'll be quick. With regard to the signage, with regard to the plantings, with regard to the irrigation. Any problems in supplying that information to the planning board later, once those things are, are resolved? So that we make sure that something as simple as signage, if it's going to require additional lighting, we can have an opportunity to assess that.
No problem.
Okay, with regard to, I note that there's a generator at the back, has there been any type of? Information provided to you as to the nature of the generator, as to what noise it may make, as to whether or not there's going to be an enclosure?
It will have an acoustic enclosure. It will, that it will still be audible when it runs. Once a week it will self test. Time of day that it's tested can be adjusted so that it could be at, you know, two in the afternoon, it's not going to happen at two in the morning, I'm sure. And that's so that it, it gets exercised to make sure it's working, so if there's an emergency that it will actually run. It's going to power the entire building, it's going to most likely be. Diesel generator, because that's considered under the way this is regulated, it's considered. Reliable, whereas a natural gas generator is not because if, if there's an earthquake, which we do sometimes have in New Jersey. The concern is that a gas pipe might rupture, so it will be most likely diesel. And it will sit on a concrete pad where it's shown in the site plan.
How much fuel diesel tank hold?
Well, we haven't finalized, normally we try to pick a tank that will hold twenty four to forty eight hours of fuel.
And that's because of earthquake situations? They would rather have only two days worth of emergency power as opposed to unlimited if we have another Sandy?
Well. I guess the issue is, it always is whether you. Assume that you couldn't get deliveries. You know, that's, that's one of the issues, so we haven't finalized that yet, that's a discussion to be finalized with the chief.
Well, I'm saying, saying questions with regard to the trash enclosure, is there going to be an enclosure or is it just a pad?
There'll be a trash enclosure, just with, just for your information, DPW does have diesel on site. So you have your own fuels, you have, you have your own in-house fuel, refueling capability if you can't get a delivery.
And any problems in providing us with a specific, with some detail, you know, a drawing as to the generator enclosure and trash enclosure?
None whatsoever, generator enclosure will be a manufacturer's enclosure.
I see, okay, gotcha. Has there been any type of leads check off or lead certification sought or any type of things like, like that concerning? The green structures?
So we, we met with the green team recently. And started discussing some issues about. These green features, including the ones that Rick and I have discussed so far tonight. Our understanding is that the borough wants to make the building. Lead like without actually pursuing. Official certification, so we're going to look for opportunities to do sustainable things on the site and in the building. But we're not going to be going through a formal certification process.
Very good, thank you, I have no further questions to the chair. I, I want to get back to the generator, I, I acknowledged its location and we didn't spend much time thinking about it. Because I, I didn't ask questions because it seemed to me that it was located correctly, given what your choices are. One problem, one concern I have, first of all, this is Fairhaven and the sixty four people. That are participating in this call know that we lost power almost the entire town for five days over the summer, there was no hurricane. This is a regular problem in Fairhaven and it should be planned for. If there's diesel, where's the tank going, is it above ground or below?
It's a belly tank, so the generator sits on top, the generator itself sits on top of the tank. And the tank sits on the pad.
Double line, full.
Double line, yes.
And, and my question, Rich may be able to answer this, I mean, if we have diesel fuel two hundred yards away at the DPW, do we have a mechanism to get diesel fuel from A to B?
We do not. That would be problematic. But I do understand Rick's point. So obviously we still have to. Talk with them and, and size it appropriately to see, see how many days of fuel we need. And, and just to note though, that the generator at the firehouse is diesel. As well. And they get deliveries, we top them off, you know, regularly when we get fuel over TPW.
Hey, Rich, you know how that worked out as far as Sandy was concerned for the firehouse? Were they able to get diesel fuel, I mean, I know a lot of people couldn't get fuel.
We were able to, we, we have a contract, I was able to. Set everything up, knowing that that storm was coming, so we got our tanks topped off at DPW as well as the fire, the firehouse. And, and we were okay, and we, we even got fuel through that duration, I think we were out about twelve days, if I remember. Back in.
It, it wouldn't be unreasonable to consider multiple generators. I mean, you know, a twenty, twenty kilowatt or whatever is enough to run a pretty substantial house, I don't know what's available. But I, I think we should defer this issue for, to the committee, but I think we've raised some good points and I, I think they'll, I'm sure they'll be worked through.
Oh, by the way, one of the, one of the green features I forgot to mention earlier is there is intention to pre-run conduit. To make the facility a, ready, ready to accommodate. Electric vehicles at some point in the future, but not to pre-wire it, just to, just to ready it for that in consideration.
That's a fantastic idea, that's going to happen. Okay, Mr. Goldstein, do we have anything further?
I don't have anything further, Rick, do you have anything?
I don't think I have anything further.
Okay, why don't we at least for the moment stop the share screen, please? Are there any other members of the planning board that have any questions? Elena, do you have any issues as our planner with regard to what you've seen or any questions that you'd like to ask?
I do not, the one thing I was going to ask that you actually just touched on was the electric vehicle. Charging stations and whether the PD might be kind of living in the future a little bit at this moment. But whether there was going to be a need at some point for electric vehicle charging stations. And whether that could be, you know, was thought to be incorporated into the site plan in the parking lot.
It, it, it has been, there are plans to, I mean, jumping ahead just a little bit and, you know. Give, tilt, tilting our hat to the DPW, we do intend to actually put some charging stations in at DPW in the public lot in the front of the DPW. But for the police, we think, the, the chief seemed to think that, that was further out than for the police department than the public. And that we would just, as I said, just pre-run conduits and be ready to accommodate it, but not actually pre-run, pre, pre-set it up.
That's, that sounds perfect, and I think, you know, a lot of what we talked about, what you guys had discussed earlier during this call was all really good, you know. Trying to figure out a way to get a better path for the kids to the park. I think that should be, you know, focused on, but I think, I think it's overall, it's a, it's a pretty good plan.
Thanks, Lily. Any other board members, any questions before we go to the public? Okay, seeing none, I would ask, I know that there's a lot of people in attendance. If you're interested in commenting or having any questions, if you could use your raise hand feature. Our super duper moderator, John Mulay is going to pick you at random and will bring you forward. And then the, we'll have your questions answered or responded to best of our ability.
Mr. Leader, I assume you want them brought in as panelists for this conversation, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, here we go. We'll just pick them as they came up. I got Dick Fuller, Richard Fuller. I'll ask him to. He's gone.
No, no, he's there.
Okay, good. There you go. And there he is.
Dick, you're on, you're on mute, Dick.
Look, nice ceiling.
Dick, you're still on mute. We're waiting for you.
Yeah, here, am I there?
Yep.
I'm, I'm there.
We can see the top of your head.
Just to come back to Todd's. Just to come back to Todd's point. I think there's something conceptually missing. And that is the police station, that area is used as a pass-through by kids with bicycles and and walk. So the current plan looks like, and it has a great deal of depth with it, but there's some missing with. You need to, it really needs to reflect the fact that it is an area through which kids pass. I don't think you can plan on putting bicycles on a sidewalk. If it's not illegal, it should be. And I think that's perhaps the one thing that's missing is any evidence of thought about how bicycles are supposed to get through the area, going to Center Park, going back to Fisk Street. I think that's really a necessary thing. Or something to look at. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, I think the architect spoke of somebody and deep in the night worried about dispatch. I don't think Fairhaven dispatches from the station, they dispatch from patrol. I, I don't think, for the most part, you can reach someone at the police station at night. I tried it the other night. The call is taken, I think, in freehold and then brought back to patrolmen. The, the station looks large for the amount of function that it has. I don't know who will be there generally in the evenings, but I don't, dispatch is not a, an issue for Fairhaven. I should have expected to see some savings of of space, some savings of area because of that. The other thing that I'd like to mention is who is responsible for looking forward to a maintenance plan? The police station previously wasn't maintained well. Neither was the DPW. Does the arc, can the architect provide a maintenance plan?
Shall I answer the question?
Yeah, I don't know that, so I don't know that there's a specific person to answer that. I'm looking at you, Teresa. Are, are you in a position to to respond to the question with regard to future plans for maintenance? And and how that gets administered, trying to focus on the future, not the, not the past? You're on mute, Teresa.
I think it's very fair to say that the, the governing body is certainly is aware and and needs to plan for the future that once you build these new facilities, while you can fund them through capital, the future maintenance of them from a personnel and materials falls to the borough and that will have to be absorbed into a future current fund budget to allow for proper maintenance of all borough facilities, but certainly for the new ones. That'll include custodial and other maintenance considerations that will have to be addressed in the future.
Well, one, one of the things I'll add, Mr. Fuller, because I asked the question because I was interested in it, is using maintenance-free exterior materials is going to help a lot. I mean, hardy board siding, you know, is good for thirty, forty years, doesn't, it really doesn't even need to be painted. You know, if they use AZAC for trim, and we didn't specifically hear that, but you know, that is a maintenance-free material as long as you keep it white. If you plan ahead, you can certainly limit what will need to be done. But obviously, we're going to have to work together when those things come forward and support the ideas of maintaining these new investments.
What is the lifetime expected?
Of the building? Yes, we're, we usually plan police facilities for at least fifty years.
Thanks. Eli, do you have anything to say about the maintenance and maintenance planning?
Well, as we discussed earlier, and I don't know if you were listening at the time, we are planning to use low-maintenance materials such as fiber cement siding and trim. We have masonry for the lower portion of the cladding. We have clad windows, which are aluminum clad, which are low-maintenance. We're using roofing materials that have thirty to forty-year warranties on them. So the idea is to minimize the maintenance costs and efforts required for the envelope of the building. I should also say this is going to be a structural steel frame building. So this is a very substantial structure, which has to be designed to a very high standard in order to make the state requirements for an essential public facility. Again, in order that it's not damaged during wind, storms, or earthquakes.
I'm surprised we didn't touch on that sooner. That's very interesting, Mr. Goldstein. Mr. Fuller, did we get to all your questions? You're on mute.
I'd like to hear something specific on dispatch by patrol and the savings that Fairhaven recognizes, the savings in space need.
Well, we're not planning to do anything different from what's being done now, as I understand it. The, the, the amount of space for the dispatch area, we call it dispatch, is really, it's really a records bureau with a person who can call the county if they need to. But as I mentioned earlier, for often during the day, everything is going to be shunted to the county automatically. One of the reasons the new building is larger than the old, not just because the old was crowded, but also because the old had inadequate facilities for female officers. So the new building will have a locker room for men and a locker room for women. And a dedicated shower area for men and a dedicated shower area for women. Plus, all the, the bathrooms in the building need to be larger in order to comply with accessibility requirements.
I'll walk behind it. I can, I can probably answer some of that dispatch question. Dick, the, like, like Eli said, the, the, we, we call it the dispatcher, but truly the records clerk will be there, which is the same as now. The room is about the same size that we have now. And we also got to prepare to take dispatch back anytime. During Sandy, we dispatched during Sandy and a couple other times since then we have also. But the room is really for the records clerk and we just call it, you know, it'll also be used as a spec. I can also add to a generator question really quick. The last storm we had, Aces, where we were out powered, I think it was about two days. We only used about twenty gallons of diesel. Because we have a diesel generator now because our natural gas generator broke. So we're actually using a temporary diesel generator and that lasted twenty gallons, lasted us the two days. So I think that the average one, new ones are about fifty gallons, we get about five days. And during Sandy, we had no problem with the firehouse, like Rich said, the firehouse is diesel, we were able to maintain that without a problem. And diesel generators are generally quieter, quieter now, the, the one we have now, the temporary one have now, you can't even run. It's much part of the natural gas.
Mr. Fuller, was that responsive to your question?
Yeah, thanks a lot. Now I know what dispatch is.
Okay. Let's move on to the next question, Mr. Mulay.
Okay, I'm going to move in the next one. We've got House Lady. Come on down. We want to unmute Ruth.
Is that Ruth?
I believe so.
There it is. Thank you.
Perfect.
Several housekeeping things. I have a question for the chief. How many prisoners over the last three years have been held at the police station? And have they been held overnight or transported to freehold?
Chief's no longer on the panel.
Uh, should be, let's see, I don't know where he went. Let me bring him back.
We got everybody else on.
There he is, yep.
What was the question, what was the question?
How many prisoners over the last three years have been held in Fairhaven overnight? And were, were they instead sent out to freehold?
Yeah, yeah, generally, no prisoner stay overnight. So generally, no, they, they're put in a cell for up to a couple hours to twelve hours, maybe wait for court. But nobody generally stays overnight. There have people stay overnight, we have court the next morning, but generally, nobody stays overnight.
Okay, second question. How many police are onsite each shift?
Day shift around five, normally around three.
Okay. The elevator you mentioned, does it serve all three floors of the building?
Yes.
Okay. The lights on the building, you noted how they would affect the houses on the same side of the street, but how would they affect the houses across the street?
They're equally shielded.
Okay. Are there going to be sidewalks across the front of the building? Another, a long Fisk Street, are there, are there going to be, are you putting in sidewalks?
At the moment, the plan has sidewalks to the building, but I do not believe we have a sidewalk proposed across the front of the building at this time.
Oh, that's definitely got to be fixed.
Okay. You have taken away, basically, the meeting place, the community center. You, you've got a building that is just as huge with less resident use. And I can see this becoming a huge expense further down the road. Now you have this room you spoke about that was up on the second floor for police meetings. Why do you need to have police meetings? Do you have many police meetings?
Ruth, right now, we have a, we have a meeting room in our basement and generally it's about the same size that we have now. But yes, we have meetings, we have training days. We host other departments, just like they host us. We have different groups throughout Monmouth County for different functions that we all do together through the county.
Well, can this, can this not be a, a community space that you use when you need them for these meetings? And for the rest of the time, let them continue to be our community center for our senior citizens, for a warming cooling center, for perhaps a Wi-Fi access center, for the garden club, for the scouts, for the various after-school programs. I, I just think we can get more use out of this building than having it a dedicated solely police department function.
Hey, this, this meeting room is not very big. It's a meeting room, nothing like community center, and it's within our police department, so it would not have access from outside.
But the building looks so huge. Are, are you getting the most bang for your buck, the most space that you can out of this building, out of the envelope? It's just, it seems like we're spending a lot of money. And, and the community center, whether you think so or not, is really a vital part of our community. And I don't see any place else in town where it would fit in, especially with the lack of handicap accessibility of the concession stand meeting room, the small size of bicentennial hall, the lack of accessibility to the second floor of the firehouse. It just, I think this has got to be rethought.
Yeah, I can only answer the one question you had there, there's a bunch in there. But myself and I worked with Eli very closely and Rick to, to use every space we could. And there's nothing really extra thrown into this building. It's, it's, it's pretty much exactly what we need with no extras for the police.
Councilman Rodriguez, do you want to answer that question regarding the community space or do you want me to take it?
I can jump in. So two things, I believe that bicentennial hall is far larger than the current community space. And we plan to make that have all of the passive recreation purposes and meeting purposes, along with parking and handicap access, handicap, appropriate handicap bathrooms, which don't exist in, in the current building. And then for active recreation, which there is no active recreation right now, for indoor purposes, we'll be working with the schools who are now getting something close to, I guess, fourteen million dollars worth of renovations with, which I believe we'll be able to get a lot of usage out of for active recreation. So for, for things like scouting, Ruth, that you mentioned, and other active activities, we would rely on the, on interlocal with the, the Fairhaven School Board.
Okay, but bicentennial hall is sorely deficient on parking spaces. And even now, the seniors, when they meet, take up ten or twelve spots onsite and then along the street, across the street. Where the bicentennial hall is located, you've got commercial buildings that don't allow a lot of on-street parking. You've got the back of the Acme Shopping Center, you've got the back of the Boynton Building or the front of the Boynton Building. And then you've got the Ball Field, two or three houses up the street. So there isn't a lot of on-street parking on Cedar Avenue, Cedar Avenue.
That's correct. We, we actually, the streets are wider, Cedar and Foreman are wider than Fisk. Additionally, the parking is quite substandard at the current police station. We think that with the addition of a, a parking lot, which has been conceptualized but not could not approved by the council, should yield both handicapped and and regular parking. Because those facilities are used in the evening, we think that on-street parking and other, other capabilities in the area will actually exceed what currently happens. I, I'm sure you've been to, you know, widely attended events in the current community room at the police center and have found it exceedingly difficult to park, I'm sure.
Yeah, because we're competing with the police vehicles that sit there most of the time.
Correct. Um, agreed.
I don't know, I, I just, what about, are you then considering or planning to use bicentennial hall as a warming center and stuff like that?
Yeah, we can consider putting a generator at that facility, which would allow for Wi-Fi, would also allow for cooling in the summer. And also, you know, the mentioned power outages that that occur in this town way, way too often. We're all victims of that and we're, you know, obviously a topic for a different day. But yeah, that would be some of the planning.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
Okay, Joe.
Okay, we got another one coming in. It's Chris Brenner. Is there any, if there's anybody also in the panelist mode that doesn't need to be there, let us know and we can move you out as well.
Hi, just wondering what the status will be for the existing police radio antenna that's on the building today?
The antenna is a freestanding antenna and is intended to remain.
So it'll, it wasn't in the renderings, but I guess it will just be similar on the new building?
It's, again, it's freestanding, it's going to stay in the exact same location that it's currently in, and it's going to be the same antenna.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fernandez coming right up. Mr. Fernandez coming right up. And if you can unmute Mr. Fernandez, that'd be great. There you go.
Hi, this is Dennis Fernandez. And my question was, what's going to happen to the multipurpose practice wall area? That's in the southeast corner, Exhibit C2. Because as it's currently labeled, it's not just a concrete wall and paved area in the engineering drawings. It's a it's a multi multipurpose practice wall area. And it serves a purpose and it is currently used by the residents. And hopefully, the board can actually look at this and see why it can't exist along with the basketball court that is currently there.
And we call. Go ahead, Mr. Fernandez. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sorry. And so my question is, are the borough professionals and the planning board are going to take this area into consideration? And if yes or no, why not?
So Mr. Goldstein, if one of your crew could pull that back up again, I don't know if Rick, I don't see Rick anymore. We got too many people on this panel, frankly. But if we could pull that site plan up and if we could show that area so we can talk about what's going to happen there?
Yeah, Rick needs to come back in. Should be there. There he is. He's not here. Where'd he go? I don't know. Here he is. I don't know. Come on, Rick, where are you? There you go. He's coming in. I don't know why he disappeared. He's coming back.
You're on mute, Rick.
I'm back.
Rick, would like you to share a screen with us, please, and show us on the site behind the area that the residents speaking of.
Let me get my screen back here for you. Let me share this out. Green share, share, share. That backup?
Yes.
Okay, so if you'll notice, the borough has proposed, and I believe this board has seen the subdivision related to the park and the separation of the police station property from the green acres property associated with the park. Included in that separation was the paved area behind the existing police station, which included that wall. And that is, you know, future space available to the police if they need it at some point. Undesignated at this point is my understanding, which is why that wall is still there, but it is not. I don't know that it's designated to be demolished at this point, but it's not part of the park per se.
Well, that's a that's kind of a formal answer to the question. Maybe Mr. Rodriguez can respond. It may it may well have been a part of the subdivision. We certainly didn't talk about taking part of a park and and putting it to the police station for something they don't need.
I'll I'll take that, Todd. The 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 deal for the subdivision was worked out with NJDEP for the benefit of the public who want to wear the police department building, which was never open space, is the same block and lot as the larger tract of the park. And as such, it's listed as part of our Rossi. When we discovered that, we went to NJDEP and worked out the meets and bounds for what they considered historically parkland and what they considered historically part of the actual police department development. And as you can see, the blue basketball court is obviously was and is recreational space and considered a parkland. And the section behind the police department that you see that contains the wall was considered part of the impervious surface that police used to access. You know, they had a shed back there and and the police sometimes use that for other activities that were associated with the police department. So the the approval of NJDEP has already been sought and given for that subdivision. However, as as far as NJDEP is concerned, the borough can use that area for recreational purposes. What we can't do is use the open space area for police department purposes. So so they only care about open space being used for activities that are open space. They don't have take position on what we do with that small area there that's a part of the subdivision.
I don't.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I I was going to say, I don't believe we've made any plans for that small parcel. I know that the building will move, you know, to the left and forward from what you're looking at on the screen. And and the parking lot as a result will end where the basketball court is. So if you could picture it running parallel with the court, you know, that has not been, from what I understand, is not part of this, not part of the the current proposed site.
All right, I'm going to restate the question because I I was a part of the subdivision and Theresa, I think you described it correctly, as I recall. That that appendage to that lot was part of the original lot. And so separating it outside of the green space made total sense. But you now have a hedge row, you have a generator, you have a parking area which stops. Is there any reason to not preserve what's there? And to the extent it isn't being preserved exactly as it is, restore it to something like it is, regardless of whether it's considered part of the DP or the or the borough property or green acres. What difference does that make?
The borough has the ability now in the future to do anything they want with that parceled land. Like I said, the DEP will take no position on how we utilize it, whether we utilize it for recreation or otherwise now and in the future. The only time they would get involved is if we tried to utilize the parts that were not considered as on the police block and lot for something other than open space or recreational activities. So the short answer to that is, if you decide to use that as a recreational area, you certainly can do so if you try to decide to use it for something else. A perfect example is maybe you want to add storage sheds in there or something else that you haven't really thought about now for the park or for something in the future. There's no reason why you couldn't. There's no reason why you couldn't put, you know, a small, a set of bathrooms in there or something else that you think the public might want to utilize. So the borough is free to use that area however we see fit in the eyes of the NJDEP.
All right.
I would think that the the recreation committee would want to weigh in on on that as well.
Sure. Sorry. Sorry. Don't mean to interrupt, but I actually attended the rec committee meeting in December. And if I if I remember correctly, almost everyone on that meeting was in favor of Fair Haven actually having a multipurpose practice wall. And they were not sure that the whether the facilities company wanted that wall to be there or not. Or they had said that the facilities company had not, or the borough had not approached the recreational committee at that point, at least.
Yeah, it's my understanding, and I'll close out on this so we can get other questions in. I believe there is progress with the rec committee relating to a wall, a new new wall, and it may be in Fairhaven Fields. But that's really a rec committee topic, not a planning board or facilities topic.
Okay, the the reason I brought it up because it's because the subdivision line has changed here. And it keeps it keeps going back to. So so the so the the reason I I'm yoring right now is that the the subdivision line has changed. So was this presented to the NJDEP, if I'm not mistaken, that's the right word, as a part as a part of the part that was being used? Or was it presented just as a concrete wall as it is in the current current design?
It was presented not only in the NJDEP, but when the the borough had a process they had to go through to remove that entire parcel from the Rossi. And that meets and bounds description for the part that will no longer be open space included that area. That doesn't mean we can't use it as open space. We can't use it for some other recreational facility in the future. But the block and lot, you know, you know, will include that small section as previously contemplated and approved.
Mr. Fernandez, I'm going to try and summarize what what the response has been to your question because I think that there's been a lot of details about some of the underlying issues that really aren't directly responsive to what you're asking. The the subdivision that was approved by the planning board related to removing these lots from our open space where we no longer have control over it. The area that you're talking about is not being utilized for the current development of the police station. There was a prior question with regard to what we're losing relative to the police station. And this wall is right here in a in a gray area to be decided. There's no relevance to a wall going in another facility other than to think about, you know, how we're reworking, you know, the public spaces that we currently have. But I I would encourage the the questions to to be redirected to the to the committee to the extent that they haven't figured it out yet. Because at least in the short term, I don't see any impediment to keeping this existing public benefit where it is. It's absolutely used. And I can't think of any reason why in the short term it wouldn't be maintained exactly as it is. But I don't think, but I I don't think there's anything more to go through tonight. It isn't. It isn't part of what's on the table for us to talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Joe.
Okay, we've got nobody else. 10D with a hand up yet?
All right, let's give a five second shout out. Going once, going twice.
There's two more, Todd. Claire Ryan and W. Miller.
Okay, I'll bring in Claire Ryan. And I'll take care of Mr. Fernandez.
Hi, this is Claire Ryan. I live. Stop my video.
If you want.
I live directly behind the tennis courts on Maple Avenue, so I am south of the police station. I was wondering if, when you consider those solar panels that you had talked about by the parking area, when you do decide to do that, could you give thought to what might, how that might affect the neighbors' property, the glare? Maybe the heat coming off of those? Could you, before you go through with that, is there a plan to let the residents know that they will be there?
The Todd, okay.
That decision has not been finalized yet. That was put in there as a conceptual, as something that the green team talked about. Any of those types improvements come at a cost and if they were going to be, if they are included as part of the bid specs, they'll be put in as an alternate. And there'll be a cost related to whether or not they want to award that section of the bid, depending on the cost coming in and obviously input from the governing body members and even the public at that point.
Okay, also, this might not be the place to discuss it, but we're talking about the police station and also I know it was brought up a few months ago, the plan for a rec center directly behind the police station, which would be directly behind my house. We were talking about using bicentennial hall for people that need air conditioning when the power goes out and things like that. Is that rec center going to go forward and wouldn't that be the place for that? I'm not sure why nobody has talked about that.
Do you want me to take that?
Sure, Chris.
So, yes, we've, because the community room that's attached to the police department is no longer going to be there because of the way we've designed the police department. The passive, we think that most of the passive recreational uses will likely end up in bicentennial hall, possibly for the long run for meeting spaces and so forth. That's why we're, you know, investing in that capital asset, which is a topic for a different meeting because we don't, we don't have firm plans on those yet. As far as the recreation component that I mentioned in terms of the interlocal with the school board, that may continue in perpetuity if it's if it works out for everybody. If the town, if we find that it doesn't work, we can look into other other arrangements. We don't have any current view on any facility changes in the recreational area, but we will discuss that with the rec committee. As far as location, nobody's discussed the location for any rec or community center in in the ball fields there. It was something that we had an initial concept on. There was some pushback on it and the community wanted to weigh in. So as a point of prioritization, we're only looking at the police department and the DPW for the foreseeable future and solving for the loss of the, you know, a few hundred square feet of the community room by using the bicentennial hall and interlocal with the schools. So I hope that answered your question. Why we haven't discussed it is because it's not something we have anything in the plans for currently.
Yes, that did answer my question. I had one more question. When how about public bathrooms for kids that are playing baseball and the kids at the park and families there for tournaments? Is there any plan to put any public bathrooms immediately so that people or can you go into the police station for the public bathrooms?
Generally, those are not open currently. And I, we, you know, we have talked about addressing the the bathroom situation similar to the the baseball fields over in Fairhaven Fields where we have porta jocks if it's too far to go to the concession stand. But we haven't, you know, again, this is more of a rec question rather than a police department question. And so we haven't addressed those issues. We do want to have public engagement and feedback like what you're giving us right now. If you've got ideas, I think we should direct those to the rec committee so that we can properly factor those in as a facilities committee down the road, but that's not something we're looking at right now.
Okay, I may have missed this, but when is the timeframe for this building of the police station?
That's an Eli question, I think.
Yeah, so so the intention is to develop the design and get feedback from the residents and then from the facilities committee and the governing body and to try to finish the design in the second or third quarter so that we can put the project out to public bid and start construction hopefully before the end of the year or early next year. And then it'll take about a year or so, maybe 14 months to build.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you get everything, Ms. Ryan?
Yes, thanks so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chris, I want to pick up on two things. First of all, on solar, you know, in my experience, putting solar on freestanding arrays in that way is not the least expensive way to do solar. Safe to assume that you've considered rooftop solar as well, and that's been ruled out for a reason, or is that still on the table?
We, the surface areas of the proposed building, the roof surface areas that are facing in a favorable direction for solar gain are really not big enough to make it large enough to to justify the expense. We recognize that canopy mounted solar is more expensive and we haven't used it much, only where there are no alternatives. When we present to you the Public Works Building, we'll show you that there are some larger surface areas there that lend themselves more appropriately to building mounted solar.
Okay, so I, you know, look, solar doesn't work everywhere. We didn't even, we don't really even have a look at it in terms of what it would be. I'm a little surprised that it's a full option without really having a sense of what that view would look like, but I think, you know, issues with regard to the overall site should be considered. Mr. Rodriguez, I specifically want to come back to you with regard to those bathrooms because I think that's a really big deal. Not because it's part of the police station, because it's part of what's being removed. I mean, as a 48-year-old man, I mean, I don't know how long you expect me to hang out at a baseball game without having a place to go to the bathroom. I mean, certainly, certainly at a minimum, you need to be ready to bring in temporary facilities until such time as you have something else. And I do want to acknowledge how difficult it is to either do this one piece at a time or do it in total. You cannot do it very well. Or do it in total, you cannot do it very well. Either way, it's hard. And so I don't mean to suggest that um, it's not something you haven't struggled with, but I just, for me personally, please, make sure we got a place to go.
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, just to address that, you know, the the easiest, fastest way. Is to put porta johns in place. In strategic locations, um, we can get green colored ones so they sort of fade into the landscape and. We can locate them strategically or even landscape them if we need to. Um, so we have talked about it, but we don't have any plans to present because we wanted to get feedback. Um, on this design first. Um, and also include the rec committee on that discussion. Um, you know, there's many people who, you know, have grander views of what we should put there and. Some people want to keep it to a minimum, so we'll find the right balance for the community.
Hey, Chris. I I would think if you guys are planning some sort of. Real construction, formal bathrooms built like Fairhaven Fields. The time to do it would be when you're doing the police project and the parking lot's open and the building's being dug up as far as running plumbing lines.
Yeah, we, that, thanks Jim, that that's a great point and um, one of the things from a facilities. Uh, so for for conduits and um, and co- um. Uh, wiring and and piping, uh, all of that um, has been um, put on the table as part of. Um, what we may run and we may just um, cap them off. Um, and and landscape them, so um, we have um, discussed that. Um, and then we would just whatever the, whatever the design would be that the the community comes up with. And the committee um, brings forward for bathrooms or any kind of facility. Um, we have considered that, especially with the um, with the parking lot being ripped up. Thank you for that and and I, and that has been discussed at length.
Yeah, it's a good idea. At le- at least you're rough in if you have the opportunity.
A hundred percent. Thank you.
I just have a quick note to pick up on what uh, James just said, um, and also on the earlier comment about that space of land. To the east of the uh, basketball courts. That was that area, it's concrete, we're not sure what to do with it. Uh, uh, that might be a place to put a permanent um, restroom facility. Um, I do think this is partly connected to planning board, um. Uh, business because it does involve the replacement of existing bathrooms that are in the uh, uh, community rec site. So I do think it it's connected to what we're doing right now because now we're getting something removed. That uh, the people will no longer have a public restroom to uh, uh, access. So again, what I was uh, thinking is just to uh, again, as uh, Jim was saying. You're doing this building now, you have access to that pad area right to the east of the basketball court. So it might be time to think about putting a permanent structure there.
Yeah, well, that's great feedback. We'll, we'll work with the rec committee to um. To um, to, you know, flesh out those plans and. Um, as far as, you know, roughing in, um, we were planning on roughing in. Access to fis- to utilities, um, to create some type of. And if we never use it, then we never use it, but um, those are the kinds of things we've been thinking about. Thanks, Dave.
It's a lot, Chris. Um, Joe, do you have any more questions?
Yeah, yes, we do. I'm gonna send in uh, Mr. Miller. Had his hand up. He's coming in. And if he will unmute and share video.
I'm not sure if you want to see my video.
We do.
Oh, you're in.
Okay, um, so I I just had a couple of questions and the first one is, um. Really ideas related to finding space for. The pathway for pedestrians slash children. To go from Fisk Street to the ball fields. And but it 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 actually starts with the building. Could, could you possibly put? The site plan, rendered site plan backup?
Mr. Goldstein, can you do that for us?
Uh, Rick is taking care of that.
Sorry.
You're on mute, Rick.
Uh, my, did I, am I shared?
No, no.
Told it to share. It's not listening. There it goes. Sorry about that.
Okay, thanks. So, um. So, in the, in the spirit of trying to gain more space on the. The west side of the building for. Um, sidewalk slash pedestrian space. Um, I would ask first to ask the question of Eli. Uh, I'm looking at the floor plan and not having the benefit of the layout. Um, but I'm seeing three, what look like entrances slash exits at the front of the building. And. The first question related to that is, do you have egress from the rear of the building at all?
Uh, no, we do not.
So how are you going to address the remoteness requirement in the UCB? Uh, or UBC, um. For. Uh, for remote egress paths?
The uh, occupants, the occupant load of the first floor. Of that portion of the first floor is so low that we can have a common path of egress. And use the stairs and the entrance up front.
Okay, so. What I was hoping was that. The west side entrance was not necessary and could be maybe relocated towards the rear. And then there's five foot of space there. Which is paved, which is redundant to the sidewalk. On the west side of the driveway, which could either be put in the width. That we're looking for or landscaped to take away pervious surface.
All I can tell you is that the, that the floor plans of every floor are as tight as a drum. And there's really no. Wiggle room. We've, we've made this thing as tight as we can to fit within the parameters of the site and keep the existing building going and. We just, there's just not enough room to inside to squeeze anything more than a couple inches more out of it.
But but I think the question's a little different. It's a creative idea. I I mean, what is the point in having what's. Apparently a four-foot walkway around three hundred and sixty degrees of the perimeter that can't be serviced by an asphalt driveway?
Well, I suppose this is really a question for Rick as to how close. The cars could come realistically to the face of the building without.
Well, I think, I think your tight point is at the doors, when the doors are open and what the requirement is for your landing.
Hey, we, we, we like to have a landing at the door. We're required to have a landing at the door. Um, and then we like to protect that landing, which is why we have the sidewalk around the building. Um, eliminating the sidewalk around the building. The cars could travel right up against the building, but that's not desirable, not a good idea.
Well, you could build up a curb and landscape it.
Right, but then if we build up the curb and landscape, it will lose the space. Yeah, I could have a curb and a landscape, it, it doesn't help me with creating the space and the buffer to the residential properties that I'm trying to. And the landscaping where it is, is providing a buffer to the.
I was bringing up the point from two purposes. One is to create the space for the walkway and the second is to reduce pervious surface. So. Just a thought.
Rick, how wide are this sidewalks around the building?
I believe they're five foot from, I believe them five foot from the curb to the face of the building.
Yeah, and I suppose we could probably take a little bit out of that.
As I said, we, I have no problem getting us a six-foot sidewalk on the west side, which I think is more than adequate. For the access to the park.
Uh, uh, I don't think it is, a- and I think that the landscaping's important and I, you know, you got a police station in a residential area. I think all that's important. I I think that the the public use of this site historically. Is something that doesn't appear to be acknowledged on the site plan. And I know that there is a lot of factors to be considered and I'm sorry to harp on one. But I I mean, I I would be not disappointed to see a ten-foot wide area. For every kid in town to comfortably meander past the police station to the park. And I realize that's not part of it. I realize that the responses I'm getting are, I've got a foot here, I've got a foot there. But it, I I think this is, this is the biggest shortfall of the plan because our kids right now. Are almost in the police parking lot playing. I mean, that's how, that's how much this is used.
Can I ask a question? Is there any way of putting in a bike lane? Maybe narrow the sidewalk a little bit, but but put the footage into a bike lane so the kids could walk their bikes. Past the um, police department. So they have a designated area. It's gonna be tough if kids have their bikes on a sidewalk and you have pedestrians walking.
And especially if it's fifteen feet wide, if you, that's a great idea, Councilwoman Koch. I I love that idea. That's fantastic because we could narrow the the drive path and widen the concrete. Um, but I think part bike, part um, pedestrian is actually really in line with the spirit of this town too.
Rick, you could certainly look at that, right?
We can, we can look at that. Um, we, we need to talk about that. That has potential conflicts that are problematic, I think.
Mr. Miller, the floor is still yours.
Just one other comment slash question. Um, I have uh. Coached at this field for many years and I'm familiar with the the neighbors' trees. And um. I'm also familiar with solar structures like the one that is depicted in the rendering. And I really see, once that goes up, a lot of damage to the neighbor's tree from, from. Reflectance of heat, um, especially to the property to the west. Um, but also to. The cat property that's catty cornered to the east. So that's just a comment on my part. I would think twice before putting solar panels there. That's it.
Mr. Miller, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, do we have any other um, comments from the public? Rick, I think we need to unshare screen. Thank you. Joe, where are you?
I don't see any additional hands raised, uh.
I don't see Joe.
He's on mute.
I'm right here.
Oh, there you are. I just saw your video.
I'm just, yeah, I brought in Megan Krishniky. She was uh, the one who wanted to chat and I asked her to unmute and if she can. Start video, she's good, she's up.
Hi. Hi, everyone. I just, um, first of all, I wanted to thank the facilities committee and the. Planning board for going through this tonight as well as the borough professionals. Couple of questions I have. Um, this is the first time it, I've seen this plan in its entirety being presented. I wanna, first of all, um, ask because I think I missed it. The parking spaces increased. Is that accurate? Can someone tell me from what to, from how many to how many?
It went from twenty-eight to thirty-three.
Okay, and will on-street parking still be permitted in front on Fisk Street? Because currently, I believe it's permitted on both sides.
We've not had any discussions about changing on-street parking requirements.
Okay, and as I understood, and I think this was mentioned earlier, there are no sidewalks proposed. In front of the police department.
That is what the plans show currently, although I sus- from what I got out of the comment from the chair. I suspect we will change that so shortly.
I would, yeah, if I.
I would think the planning board would recommend that if the borough is not going to put in a sidewalk, they should pay into the sidewalk fund like all the residents.
Well, if I remember correctly, I I believe that there is sidewalk, um, from Maple. Through a portion of Fisk heading uh, Westerly, in the Westerly direction in front of the church. And I, as many uh, residents know, Fairhaven is where the sidewalk ends, and I believe that's in fact what happens. So I don't know what extension um, could take place, but I I um, echo the chairs. Um, sentiments on that. Um. Seeing that this is in a residential neighborhood, you know, I was a little concerned that the design. Aspect, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time or place to raise this, the design aspect. Of the front facade could benefit from an additional gable to look more. I don't know, to fit more with a residential type of aesthetic. Has that been considered?
We, we could certainly look at that. We have, we tried a lot of different shapes and forms and. We looked at hips and gables and and uh. After much studying, we felt that this was the best balance. Uh, given that the volume we needed to accommodate the uses that are in the building.
Sure, and I guess in kind of in con- conjunction with that. Um, as an alternative to an additional gable to making it look. A bit more, you know, fitting with the neighboring properties. Is there any thought or has there been any thought or discussion to replicate any of the current design aspects on the front? For example. There is, I don't, I don't know what you call this, there's more of a horseshoe-shaped sidewalk around the flagpole. That then leads up to the front stairs and there's kind of the old-fashioned light globes. I'm wondering if there's any sort of. Um, you know, idea to replicate that design in any aspect to feel familiar to the. Fairhaven residents of something that's, you know, they've seen before. This is their PD. Um, that we know and just curious if that has been discussed.
Well, we're still in this schematic phase. These are all good ideas. We'll certainly take them under advisement. But we have a long way to go in developing the, the uh, lighting, the shape of the entrance, the. Configuration of the sidewalks that lead to the front door. We have a lot left to do on that.
Okay, thank you. And then I noticed that there's fencing along the rear of the property between the um, open space area and the parking lot. How tall is that proposed fence?
It'll be at least a four-foot fence. There's a grade separation there, so we need a fence to keep people from falling off. Um, so, to pr- probably a four-foot fence on top of the wall.
Okay, and that's the same height fencing proposed for between the walkway and the egress? The uh, to the west. There's the, the egress, um, lane. And then there's the walkway.
There's, right, no, right now, there's not a fence proposed. There's just a small retaining wall proposed on the west side.
Can you, Tom, can you explain what you mean by a small retaining wall?
It's about a, it's an eighteen-inch to two-foot-high retaining wall to s- to to ease the grade separation.
You're talking about between the four-foot sidewalk walkway from Fisk Street to the open space?
Correct. And as we pushed, it, that wall may grow as we widen the sidewalk, as we push it back towards the property line. It also is possible we take that side, that that wall and flip it. And put it along the driveway to incre- to increase the space, um. The the size of the sidewalk is, and maintain separation.
Are, is there a change in grade that's happening to the property there? I mean, I'm fairly familiar with it. I understand its slopes, but. Uh, are you, is, are the proposed plans adjusting how the building is situated on the grade?
We are maintaining, w- we're adjusting the floor elevation and we're flattening the middle of the site, so yes.
So you're bringing it down?
We are bringing it down, correct. So we.
How far?
As I said, the total grade separation is about four feet. The back of the lot is about, will be about two feet lower along the parking lot. And the back, the back parking spaces are about two feet lower than the playground.
Okay, what's the justification for that?
The geometry of the building. We need to.
What is that?
We, we need, we need access to the Sally Port and we need to maintain grades around the building for the geometry of the building.
Um.
But it's no longer going to be a flat run from the front of the property to get back to the, to the basketball court? You're not gonna have to go up steps?
There's a ramp.
Let me see, I'm just looking through my notes. I apologize. Um, the, if I, if my review of the plans are accurate, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the current. Um, the, if I, if my review of the plans are accurate, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the current police department and, and community center together are twenty-nine thousand square feet and the current proposed police department on its, oh, I'll say, I'll say on its own cuz we're not including the community. I never understand the community center is still being developed or whatever is happening with the community space is twenty-nine, about twenty-nine thousand square feet. Is that accurate?
That's the size of the land. It's not the size of the
Size of the land.
It's the size of the land.
Understood. Okay, how about the building? So then I didn't get that right.
The new building, including all three floors, or the basement is primarily for storage, but the total for the whole building is approximately ten thousand square feet. The existing building, I don't have those numbers in front of me as to the total between the police department and the community center.
Okay.
Mr. Goldstein would, Mr. Goldstein would have a hard time before the zoning board because he's not leading with his best argument. That whole basement doesn't count, so don't think about it that way. It's all hidden. It's sixty-three, it's sixty-three hundred square feet above grade. That's not exact. It's general for whatever reason. But, but I just wanna comment on what that is because there was another comment about how big this is. Relative to the floor ratio, it's, it's very reasonable. We, we certainly don't see anything in R-five that comes in at twenty percent. But more than that, this is more than three residential R-five lots. And if you just did the minimum at twenty-two hundred, you would be at sixty-six hundred. And they're below that. That's not to say that the massing of three structures right next to one another won't appear to be big. But I do think that overall, in terms of square footage relative to the land, there, there is, there's a sensitivity here i- in terms of overall. Um, a- and I did, I did wanna raise that and I did wanna compliment the design in that regard, although Meg, I just wanna point out that you're hitting on some good things about the grade. It just, it's another extension of this, it seems to me, this, you know, unseen conflict with some of the existing usage of this land for kids on bikes.
Right.
Can we talk about the grade itself, just to put a finer point on it? I don't think it's that high. I think we need a ramp because it's, it's off slightly, but we're not talking about a six or ten-foot grade. We're talking a few feet.
Two feet, two, two and a half, something like that.
Yeah, so two feet, it doesn't even require a handrail effectively, just to put it in perspective.
No, I'm just thinking, I mean, I used to live across from the property, so uh from the police department, so I, I understand and I'm very familiar with the site. I'm imagining a two-foot retaining wall between the property neighboring to the west and the current site, and that feels fairly significant. Two feet is not, you know, negligible. So I'm just trying to imagine what that looks like, and I know we don't have any elevations available at this point in time.
I- i- if I can, I mean, the existing floor of the police station right now is up at elevation twenty-eight. The floor of the new building will be down at around twenty-five. So the building itself is, I mean, the, the existing police station, as you come in, slope, you slope up, but you, you go up a fairly steep hill to get to the front of the door. And then you go up several steps, which is why the grades work. We're pushing the building down so it relates to the street better. But that
Right, but that, right, but then you're, you're regrading the property itself, meaning you're kinda digging out layers of the property.
Right now, you have, uh, uh, again, the police station's kind of up on a hill. You, you, you probably don't even realize it looking at it, but there's several feet of grade change up to the front door of the police station right now. We just, we just rearranged how that works.
Does that create a drainage problem at the police department site?
No, it'd actually help. It creates, it puts us down low, so we take the water. We don't spread, we don't shed it.
No, I understand that, but do you have to properly accommodate that?
We, again, it's incorp- it's incorporated in the paid forest payment design. Just to answer your question, the existing buildings are about forty-one hundred square feet.
Okay, so it's an increase, so it's an increase from about forty-one hundred square feet to ten thousand, and I'm sorry.
To the new building is thirty-seven hundred, increasing, the footprint of the building decreases.
Total building sixty-three hundred square feet, existing buildings forty-one.
No, existing, it's forty-one. Building is multi, the existing building has multi-stories. The existing foot, the footprint of the new building is only thirty-seven hundred square feet. The, to, that's thirty, sixty-three is the, which is two stories.
Right, footprint of the existing is forty-one hundred, so we're actually decreasing the footprint by about ten percent.
And that, that footprint, you're including the community center in the rear?
Correct.
For example, yes.
Okay, I, I, I think I only have one other comment. I just wanna comment again. Someone men- mentioned the concept. I believe it was Dick Fuller, the concept of maintenance. It's a fairly large concern of mine, um, that these new facilities are properly maintained and that we have a plan in place to address the needs, um, you know, in advance of uh crises-type situations, and I realize that comes at the governing body level. And, um, you know, whatever direction our professionals are able to provide in that capacity. Um, whether it be in terms of sustainable materials or what maintenance plans will assist us in avoiding the situation we're in right now, and the future is really appreciated, and I just wanna thank everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else, Joe?
Yes, sir. We got Mike McQ, Mike McQ coming in.
Thanks, Joe. A couple of points of clear Here we go. Couple of points of uh clarification. You know, actually, start off with, um, I appreciate you guys bringing up the walkway um for access for the kids. We started with nothing and then we went to uh Rick got us at four foot and it looks like under your uh direction expertise, we're, we're gonna look to widen that, which sounds great. Eli, perhaps maybe you could explain besides the specs that you know, you and the chief worked out why we got to that ten or ten thousand square foot range for a police station? Because, just to kind of clarify why some people think that may be big for a police station.
Yeah, sure. Uh, thank you, Mike. So, um, again, as the chair mentioned, we really shouldn't count the basement. And in this case, it's partly because much of it is not really for occupancy. It's, it's storage. The police department and the municipality are required to keep a lot of records forever, even though we're in a world of digital storage. They're still required to keep certain things in hard copy. And we found this situation with many of our municipal clients that they need to have substantial areas for long-term storage. So that's what much of this basement is for, and a little bit of it is for evidence storage for the police department. And the rest is for mechanical equipment. So there's really not anything substantial occupied in the basement for the police department. So the police department is really the first and second floors. So we're talking about approximately sixty-three hundred square feet. Which is uh something like twice or slightly over twice what they have now. But as I mentioned earlier, part of that is because there are certain spaces in the existing building that are undersized because they don't meet current requirements for accessibility, like the bathrooms. Or they're completely missing like adequate facilities for women police officers. So, um before we started designing, we went through a detailed programming analysis with the department to talk about the different functions, the spaces, they need the number of people today and anticipated, and in addition, we had to make, make it meet current requirements in terms of egress, the size of the stairways, the addition of a, an elevator. All these things take up room. And so that's how we get up to a larger space than was provided in the old building, which, as I'm sure many of you know, was originally a school.
Yeah, also the Sally Port.
And of course, yes, thank you, Rick. A Sally Port, the, the Sally Port, the garage for vehicles is probably the single largest space in the building. It's about uh four hundred square feet. I think it's even larger than the conference area, the meeting, the, the training room, so that's how we get up to the space that we have.
Thanks, Eli. And one other question, put you on the spot, um, just cuz you, you mentioned you did, um Oceanport as well, just for comparison, uh, what's this? Do you remember offhand what the square footage was for that police department?
Well, actually, Oceanport's a very poor example. I'll tell you why. Oceanport has just moved its police department into an old state police barracks that were on the grounds of Fort Monmouth. And they're in a building that's gigantic because that was the one they decided to buy and use for the police department. It's much larger than they need. So a better comparison would be the new police building we did in Keansburg, which opened about two years ago. Which is for a force that's approximately the same size. And um that's a two-story building with ten thousand square feet in it. And many of the same functions, pretty much the same sizes. So for a small police department, um, that's a good fit.
Great, Eli, thanks. And I think one other, cuz this actually, I was hung up on this early on too, was the, um the engineering and Rick, you kind, you had a good explanation about, in addition to keeping the ridge line uh ridge height at thirty-two. There, there's, um I don't know, safety is, is the proper name for it, but uh eye line sight, if we were to, if we're, um, for the first floor windows, isn't there something, um, a rationale for the grading?
The, the, the grading, a- a- as Eli mentioned earlier, the grades around the building are being maintained a little bit lower so that somebody walking along the outside of the building can't see in and doesn't see what's going on inside the building easily. Um, so yes, that's part of the reason we are maintaining the grades and the key, and holding the grade down around the building. We, I mean, if you were to raise the grades, people would be looking into down and into the offices, um, which creates a security issue.
Another aspect of that is we're, we're trying to maintain very gentle grades so that it's easier to provide accessibility throughout the perimeter and into the entrances. So, um, because the entire building has to meet ADA.
Okay, great. I think that helps a little bit. Um, one last question, actually, uh, cuz we talked about maintenance of the impervious surfaces. Um, is Rich still here? I believe we have a new street sweeper that could help with the maintenance of the uh impervious surfaces. Is that correct?
You have a new modern sweeper that will be capable of sweeping the new forest base.
Right, so hopefully extend the, the lifeline of that, cuz I know some people familiar with it, and the impervious services is that they do get clogged up, but we can, we have the means to extend that a little bit, um, by keeping it clean. And that's it. I think Eli also, you know, being on the green team, you brought some good points, not just about the solar panels. We know that's kind of far off, but the tangibles, the R-levels, insulation on the inside and then the outside, the windows and the landscaping, um, you covered nicely, so thanks for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Goldstein, I wanna comment that I really like the way that the design, um, flips to a more commercial look when you get to the back, but maintains that residential look up front. Um, it's clear that you've made an effort to make it fit in. Um, I don't know whether or not anything should be changed in the front to make it fit in even better. Um, but I thought that that was a, a thoughtful comment. I also know that the building that we have now is, um, you know, has some history to it and, and, you know, has some specialists to it, and I, I think that thinking through that and whether or not there can be some details added, um, you know, to just, to just improve it, I think it's just a, just an interesting thought. But, um, I certainly wanna compliment you overall because I, it wasn't lost on me. Um, you know, that, that as you flip to the side, you've got your function, and then you've got a real nice aesthetic front to it.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, Mr. Malay, got any more?
Yep, got Ruth again coming in.
Okay.
And then one more, I think, logged after that.
Let, let me just, let me just add in before, before myth, uh, before Ruth starts. It's, uh, it's ten nineteen by my count. Um, the thinking was that we would be able to move through this a little quicker. I wanna make sure that everybody that wants to speak has a chance. But this planning board still needs to go through stormwater regs before we go home tonight. Um, so I do just wanna be mindful of that. You there, Ruth?
Oh, okay, my turn.
Yep.
Basically, having listened to all this, let's assume the building is up. It's functioning. It's got a roof on it. It's got doors. It's functioning. Essentially, what you've got, you've got a, a virtually unoccupied building most of the time. The increased parking will mostly be used by people for the fields, and the rest of the building is essentially storage, locker room and garage. And that's the way I see it at this point. It's, it's just, it's not resident-friendly. It's not walk in the front door. It's not twenty-seven, twenty-four seven, we're here for you. That troubles me because sometimes seniors have problems at night and they have no clue and they don't wanna call Freehold. They don't wanna call nine-one-one. They just want somebody that they can go over and it's your friendly neighborhood policeman and he can help you. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Goldstein, thank you. Mr. Goldstein, I wanna bridge that question because, um, we've touched on some of this, but I know that there's a requirement in terms of size. We haven't actually mentioned the number, but I thought that if you did all the things you were required to do legally, that this building was gonna have to be five thousand square feet no matter what. Is that, am I remembering that incorrectly?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I thought that the minimum size of a new police station, starting from scratch, accommodating the car thing and the, the, the holding cells and all the things you, the, the bathrooms or whatever the spec is from the state, had a minimum size to it. Is that not correct?
That's not correct. There's no minimum size, and let me tell you why. For example, uh, we just did a new police and municipal building down in Burlington County. And because of the way we arranged the functions, the police department can share you know, some of the conference spaces that are also shared with the municipality, and so it's not dedicated space. Some of the spaces the police are using are not dedicated solely to them. So in situations like that, it's not as clear-cut exactly where the line is drawn. Also, some departments, uh, the state does actually, does not require any jail cells in a police department. They, they say that if you make appropriate provisions to move them out to the county quickly enough, you don't even have to have a jail cell. The decision was made to provide two cells in this building. But if the decision had been made to have no cells, the building would have been smaller. So there's no minimum size. There are certain minimum functions. But even those, there are, there's sometimes some negotiating room with the state.
Thank you for clarifying what I clearly had misunderstood. Uh, as I look at the building, I know it's gonna feel bigger when it actually gets built. But I, and, and I know we also don't have interior floor plans. But it, it strikes me as being slightly larger perhaps than it may need to be, given, you know, the size of our department, whatever, but the truth is, what do I know? I mean, I don't, I don't really know. Uh, obviously, Mr. McGovern had spoken to this um, before, and I know, Mr. Goldstein, you've been working on this project for many years and you, you did the right thing when you explained that you did the initial survey to figure out what was needed. I mean, obviously, that's the proper process, right? So you start with, what are we trying to, 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 to resolve with this building? And, uh, you wound up with something that, that doesn't stick out as being inconsistent with the neighborhood, and, and from my perspective, that's what the goal is.
Thank you.
All right.
Got one more, uh, coming in if you're ready for him.
Yep.
Liz McNeil. And I'll just go to unmute and video.
Hi, um, so my question is about, um, looking at these plans. So the rec center is gone, right, obviously, um, along with the restrooms that are in the rec center. And so the question is outstanding at this juncture where meetings and the cooling and heating center are gonna be. The presumption is, the presumption, from what I'm hearing, is that it's gonna be at bicentennial hall. The presumption is, the presumption, from what I'm hearing, is that it's going to be at bicentennial hall. Um, but as I think other people have commented, there's no parking at bicentennial hall. Are there restrooms at bicentennial hall?
Yes.
There are. Okay, are they open now for anybody to just walk in and use them?
No.
Why not?
Because the building is currently not open during the day unless we have a function going on there.
Okay, so it has to be, oh, okay, but just like with the rec center, it has to be open, opened. Is there any way people could use those restrooms now, like while the construction is happening at the police station?
The plan is to put, uh, Porta Johns in the community center. We already off of the last governing body, and I think rec meeting, uh, have, uh, getting quotes on those and looking at locations.
But those are temporary, right?
Yes, but they'll go up as soon, you know, prior to us closing the ones that are currently, uh, available.
Oh, sure. No, I understand that. I'm just wondering what the, what the plan is long-term.
The plan in long-term is, is to, to look at, at, uh, the rec committee and decide whether or not they want to put some sort of a uh, outdoor bathroom facility of a permanent nature at the community center fields, along with, uh, some other limited function.
Okay, and when, uh, uh, when are the, when is that discussion going to be taking place? And, and one of those decisions being made in concert with this, because I actually have another question that's kind of concurrent with that, which is that, you know, obviously in the drawing, you've got a tennis, you've got a basketball court, right? And then somebody earlier was asking about a wall that they, you know, that people can use to throw balls against. All of those recreational uses that have been brought up today, when is that going to be thoroughly discussed and vetted?
Well, there's no plans right now to change the basketball court. It's existing, the, the basketball court that's there and the walls existing. So, you know, they're, they're, they're not being taken down as part of this project.
Okay, I thought, I thought everybody, I thought there was a conversation earlier. I guess it's my, I'm wrong about the fact that the wall that was part of the police station is not going to be there. And so therefore, no, people aren't going to be able to play ball. So I'll just ask my question again. So when will there be a plan for what the recreation will look like, the new restrooms? Uh, you know, what the, what the surface area, what the surface is going to be on the new basketball court, et cetera?
I don't have a timeline for that yet. Um, it's, it's, uh, you know, something that, you know, the facilities committee, uh, had made a decision to put the, uh, police department and the DPW building uh, to the, uh, front of the list, uh, for being addressed. The governing body uh, supported that and, uh, authorized funding for those two buildings. Uh, if they were going to look to make other major improvements to that park, they'd have to do a, another, uh, bond authorization.
Okay, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. McNeil. I, I just want to throw in the comment that, you know, that at least one drawing of this project included something with regard to the rec center. And my knee-jerk reaction was, you know, why can't we just build a police station? Why do we have to complicate this? Because it seemed to me that the rec part was going to be hard. Um, and I, the point is not that there's a right point of view. The point is that it's hard. And there isn't a right point of view. And no matter what you try and do, there's, there's problems with it. Um, I, I will personally be going to Mr. Rodriguez's house if there's nowhere to go to the bathroom there after this building comes down. Um, and I think all the residents of Fairhaven should do that, um, to apply some pressure to make sure we have a stopgap measure. I'm obviously kidding, but, um, you know, I, you got to deal with these things one at a time, and it, it's going to have to get done, obviously, obviously.
Thank you, Todd. I, I really appreciate that. I mean, I just think that those are a lot of things. I mean, there's no generator at the bicentennial hall. The restrooms are more limited. There's no parking, like, just, I, I, I'm always very conscious. My background in planning means that, you know, you want to look at everything at the same time and at least make some cursory, basic decisions before you dive into, to one of the projects. It makes sense to take, take them each one at a time, but you have to be able to look at the whole town and say, okay, but for the, you know, 2,000 people that use the rec center regularly, what are they going to do over the next two years?
I just want to make sure it's clear. I, I don't make light of this at all, actually. We are three hours deep in a meeting and I get a little times and, and, and I'm okay with that and hope everybody's patient with me when I do that. I don't go to the rec committee meeting, so I have no idea, but I do trust that they are thinking about all those moving parts. And it's difficult for us, because we've got a particular mission tonight, and that relates only to the PD. And obviously, to get into all that other stuff, we, we obviously can do, and I'm sure there's, there's, there's good answers and thoughts on some of it, and maybe not all. Um, but, um, the, the, the process of analysis in order for it to be effective, um, y- you know, I've been thinking about it leading into tonight, has to be about what we've got. Um, to the direct impact of what's being removed, uh, even the wall, we talked about it, right? I mean, what, why would we be losing that wall? Um, but I think they're going to have to take those comments and process them. I, I know that that was their intent. Um, and I trust that that's exactly what's going to happen after tonight, and, and they'll come up with some answers, a- and, and I think they'll bridge that gap.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Joe, do we have any more questions?
I do not see any, Todd, at the moment. It looks like, uh, we've exhausted them.
Okay, um, we've heard from so many people, um, that are representing the borough with regard to the application. Teresa, maybe I'd look to you. Is there anything in closing, um, that your team, you know, wants to just say in terms of wrapping this up from your end?
No, um, just that we appreciate being heard by, uh, the, the planning board and, and, uh, I think our professionals did a good job tonight. I think it's, it's very fair to say, as I started this out, that a lot of thought and has gone into this. A lot of input's been taken to, uh, this point. And the input that, that came out of this discussion tonight, I think is valuable, and, uh, the, uh, facilities committee and our professionals will take a look at that and, uh, make some, uh, you know, tweaks to, to, to the site plan and, uh, see if we can, uh, get this to utilize the space to the best of our abilities, um, with what was brought forth tonight.
Thank you, Teresa. Mr. Rodriguez, I want to thank you in particular, um, for, for coming in and talking about what this was. Do you have anything in closing?
No, I just want to thank everybody for their patience, because I know it's been since before I was a councilman that this, um, has started. So back in 2015, it's been a long road. We've had fits and starts along the way with Sunoco and six-twenty-three and other locations, and we ended up where we ended up. And um, I think all of the comments tonight will be taken to heart. Um, we'll try to address as many of them as possible. Um, we're also trying to not burn the bank down, um, and be economical about these things, but not to spite ourselves. Um, you know, the committee, I just want to thank the committee for getting us this far, especially, um, you know, the, um, thoughtfulness of the planning board as well. And, um, for those who have written to me this week, um, an email, I promise I will get back to every single one of you. I appreciate when you reach out. You can continue to do that, and as Todd said, you can, you can come over and use my bathrooms if you need to. So thank you. Um, thanks, Todd, and thank, thanks to everybody on the, on the planning board here.
Thank you so much, Chris. Okay, um, all right, Joe, let's start by clearing the, uh, the panel, please, of everybody other than the planning board and its professionals. Um, Doug, with regard to next steps, I'm mindful of the fact that it's ten-thirty-two and we want to do stormwater. I want to know what you need in order to work up our letter.
All right, let me tell you what I, what I've heard so far, and then just need directions from you. What I've heard so far are concerns of putting a sidewalk across the front. We have requested, or at least I've requested on behalf of the board, that that it can just be addressed rather cursory, that wind line, landscape plans, signage plans are finalized, that at least the planning board sees some of those materials to make sure we have an opportunity to see how they're, uh, shape up, if you will. Also, uh, finalization of trash enclosure, generator enclosure, and, uh, to address the western pathway of the parking facility to make it wider, to make sure that the current use for pedestrian and bicycles is addressed. Anything else that I've missed? I need to hear from planning board members or any of the other issues that you'd like us to address. Basically, what I'm going to do is prepare a letter as we have in the past. This is what we did on this evening. These are some of the concerns that were expressed either by the public or, or met, were members of the board. And we hope you'll take those into consideration. Again, as I say, they're not seeking approval. They're looking for our input.
Do we want to mention anything about having no information on this solar carport? I mean, I think that would affect the plan big time if they decide to just whip that in there.
Everybody keep them coming. I'm just writing.
Well, I, I, I think those are good ones. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna emphasize, because I can't emphasize it enough, how important that, that, that pathway is between the street and the park. Um, it needs to be significant. Um, I, I, I don't think six feet is enough. Um, I think it's got to look like it was designed for kids. Um, it's got to be wide enough for multiple kids to pass. I don't want them to have to get off their bikes. It's totally impractical. I like Betsy's idea of creating a portion of that fifteen-foot, um, area for a bike lane, because that's as a practical matter where they're going anyway. But they're going to use the whole fifteen feet. That's what's going to happen. That's going to be the path, and maybe we just need to accept that. Um, I also think the generator discussion was important. We lose power all the time, and we need to pretend, not pretend like we don't. Um, if, if Rich says we're good with, with diesel, I think that's fine. But I think there needs to be a plan for that thing being up and running five, seven, fourteen days, whatever it's going to be. And if, if having storage at the DPW is sufficient, we just need to be able to get that fuel over. Nobody feels helpless like they feel helpless when they're without power. And nothing could be worse than having a police station that wasn't up and lit when everybody else was dark.
Yeah, but I think it's important that they have to be able to use it as well, right? So I think that, that goes back to the community center being moved, so that, that's a whole different story.
Hey, Rich, is there a dual-fuel generator where you could have, uh, natural gas a- and a diesel, you know?
I don't know offhand. Um, I, I haven't seen any specifications yet on what the size of the generator is and what have you. They just showed the location for purposes of tonight on the site plan. They, they haven't necessarily sized it and, you know, picked a make and model, so that, those are the next steps.
I'm also worried about, again, would that be a recommendation? J- James?
Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, if that's an option, it would be a recommendation. I mean, I kind of agree with Todd and, but like, you know, listen, I have, I have a few pump in my property or my business too. And when Sandy hit, you had no power, because we didn't have a generator. So then all of a sudden, my fuel pump was dead. Now, they, they make hand pumps, so we were able to pump fuel out and we were able to get it in my vehicles. So I guess in a, in a pinch, the borough could do the same thing. You could hand pump out into a drum. You could bring the drum over to the fire department or to the police station and fill whatever you need to fill again with the hand pump. But if we're building this thing from ground up, we're going to have the, you know, ground dug up. You could run natural gas to that area. You know, and then if you either have a dual-fuel generator, or like Todd said, I mean, we're here. I mean, maybe you put two generators in.
Wouldn't matter. I mean, a twenty kilowatt you could put in for ten grand if the fuel was already there, and you'd be able to run half the station, and at least know you could have lights if you needed them. I'm, I'm also worried about the grade. Um, I'm worried that it hasn't, I'm worried that it hasn't been designed and thought through as a, um, a- as, as a as a way to get from A to B. That, that whole property is a way to get from A to B. And if the kids need to get off their bikes, they're going to be jumping it in the other direction and trying to get over it in the, in the other direction. Anytime you're going to create little half-retaining walls, you've got a place to fall off. So now you got three kids wide, one kid's going to push one other one. It's going to be mine. It's going to be mine. Jim, your kid's going to do it. Um, you know, those are just things that I think need to be just thought through, and it's not clear that they haven't been fully. But I don't know that we heard a lot of information about how it's all going to work. And, and Doug, that would be the tone of the comment for me, would be that we just think some additional attention needs to be put to this in light of, um, you know, this, this, this full secondary use as, as, you know, kids thoroughfare. Hey, Rich, with regard to that front sidewalk, I started making light of it probably earlier and sooner than I should have. Is there no sidewalk on the left and the right and, and on the properties?
There is sidewalk along the frontage of the church as it goes towards Maple. So I think it would make sense to connect this property with that. Because as part of this prop, project, if you recall, the curb line on Fisk kind of juts out as it goes towards Maple. We want to straighten that alignment, so it's uniform. And then we can lay the sidewalk in as appropriate.
Great. Doug, did you get the comments about, you know, just revisiting the, um, the, the frontage and the front elevation and seeing whether or not anything could be done to improve it even further to, um, to, to make it
soften it to make it more residential or akin to what it is present?
Yeah, just, just further review and, and consideration of maybe trying to echo some of the architectural details of the existing station. That's difficult, because it's not at all similar. Um, but I thought it was a thoughtful comment.
Anything else?
Did you want to add something about the electric vehicle charging stations?
Uh, I think they were proposing at least to run the conduit. Is there something more that you wanted for that?
No, I think that's fine. Um, I just, you know, I didn't see anything noting that on any of the site.
No, I, I, I think, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if I have any other, my recollection was that they had decided that they were going to run conduit, not do a connection at this point in time, but run conduit, at least have, you know, a start from A to B, so that in the future, if they wished to do that, they would all be set up to do that without having to tear up the property. Okay, if there's, if there's something more by way, if the board wants, you know, to put in a station now.
No, let's, let's acknowledge it though, Doug. No reason not to say that, you know, that, that the board was, um, pleased to hear, you know, that the conduits will be put in so that we're ready for that. And I would add that the conduits would be put in to deal with that appendage at the rear, you know, with regard to the future construction of bathrooms, whatever form they might take. Anything else?
Um, I had mentioned before that because they are removing existing restrooms, should we make some comment here about the necessity, as soon as possible, getting another permanent replacement for restrooms in that area? And again, I understand it's partly recs per view, but again, in this case, that we're, we're like, uh, not responsible, but there are restrooms that are going to be removed as a result of this action.
Why don't we note, Doug, that, you know, it was raised, and, you know, it was recommended that temporary facilities be committed to until such time as an alternative to the, um, soon-to-be-removed bathrooms are, are resolved?
Unless, unless, we can also, we can take this step further, depending on what the board wants, you know, to note that the elimination, if you will, of access to rest facilities and meeting facilities should continue to be addressed. We, we understand it can't all be taken care of at this site, but to highlight that also.
We certainly have public comments along those lines. I think that that's entirely consistent with what we heard tonight. Did we mention the wall that, that was raised in terms of preserving access to that wall and maintaining that until such time as there was a different plan?
No, can you elaborate on that for me? I, I may have missed that.
So, so behind the building, there's a, there's a wall, and it's used by kids to throw, they play stickball and wall ball there. Every day of the week, you'll find them there. Um, the, the resident asked a question about what was going to happen with it, and we got into a lot of details about fee ownership, which wasn't the question. Uh, and it's clear that there's a plan down the line to do, to do more with it, and that's all fine, but there was no
Mr. Fernandez's comments.
Yes, but there was no, there was no specific discussion in the short term about just trying to leave it and not disturb it. And, and I, I would think that that's a logical comment.
But Todd, there is nothing to the contrary, right? I mean, it's not shown as being demoed on the plans.
There's, plans don't show anything. I mean, I
It, it, that, that's right behind the basketball court, right? So they're not showing anything happening with the basketball court. I don't think they're showing anything happening with that wall.
Jim, I totally agree, until I heard the answers, which was not, we're going to leave it just the way it is.
Yeah, well, it seemed a little wishy-washy there.
Yeah, a little bit. How about Sherry? What do you got, Sherry?
Um, I was just thinking that, um, I like your point about the concern for the kids. Um, it does look like the drawings are showing, um, the police station cordoned off entirely. It's almost like it, it was, it was purposefully made to, to segregate it from the youth center, when I think that half of the reason that the town was up in arms about moving the police station was because they liked the dynamic of the youth center and the police station being together. So maybe more, um, bringing them, you know, not, not necessarily coordinating off, but incorporating would be, would make more sense.
You know, I was reacting to the fact that they landscaped the, the, the rear property line.
Right, exactly. Just the whole perimeter, everything is, is blocking access.
Yeah, but it is also
Yeah, but it is also blocking light, and would the residents of Fisk be concerned about all these LED lights that are on twenty-four hours?
No, I think the east and west makes sense for that reason. But you don't need that to the rear, but the rear is how everybody passes, plus makes the police station feel that much closer to the park.
Well, they're going to have to have an opening because if you have a bike path or a sidewalk that's leading you to the fields. You need to be able to get through those headaches to get through that landscape.
Four feet wide, four feet wide, that's plenty.
That's not plenty.
Not plenty.
Is there, is there an idea of a dual purpose for that one-way exit or egress out of the 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 police station where they? The police can use that as an emergency exit only and, you know, for ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's going to be for the, for the kids and for the. You know, thoroughfare. Where they could use either cones or some sort of movable barrier or some something to that effect where. Uh, you know, if the car was to block the one side of the station and and the criminals were doing it and they didn't have smarts to block both at the same time.
I totally agree. I want to second that. You could, you could landscape that driveway, make it a kid path. And by the way. If there's cars coming around the back of the building and kids are riding their bikes up the middle of that driveway, which is exactly what they'll do. There's going to be, there's going to be a problem with the flow. Maybe it won't be dangerous, but it'll at least be, you know, keeping everybody a little bit nervous all the time.
I think the kids deserve fifteen feet.
May I pose a question to Rich? Rich, if if on that, if on that western driveway. I I understand, and I think it's a lawful purpose to make sure that you have two ways of ingress and egress. To make sure for safety purposes. But if on a daily basis, you weren't to use that, going back to to Bob's comment. Could you put something or or would it be wise or it would be ill advised to put something like a removable bollard? There, so the kids could pass freely in there. You know, use that sort of western driveways there thoroughfare to the back. But that traffic was not going to be coming in and out. Or would that defeat the entire purpose of what they're trying to do?
I think the purpose is to, you know, right now, the current parking lot is a dead end. And it is problematic. You want to, you want to maintain that circulation within the site and around the building. But I I think one of the options would be to narrow that drive. I think fifteen feet. I understand what they were trying to achieve, but for a one-way out, you don't need fifteen feet. I think we take some of that real estate. I think we incorporate the ped path. Bike lane, bike way, children, you know, pedestrian access. I think you push it closer to the residential property on the west side, almost along a fence line and separate the two. The fact that the sidewalk is right now, right on the backside of the curb of that driveway, kids are going to spill over into that driveway. I have a three and five year old myself. I know what they do on a regular basis. So I would, I think it would be better suited to landscape the area between the path and the driveway out. To create some type of buffer for those using, you know, that pedestrian path. So we create the proper, you know, the goal is to create an interconnectivity between. Community center fields and the neighborhood. Um, my concern is kids are going to ride their bikes wherever they want, and they're going to be riding against, you know, the driveway. And that fifteen foot is going to allow, they're going to be riding two, three, four wide.
It seems, it seems to me, no matter what you do. If if kids come onto that drive, they're riding in the driveway. They're not standing on the sidewalk.
I I think if we, if we design it in such a way where we separate it. And and maybe utilize the use of that wall that they're looking at. And now it's only a knee wall. It's eighteen, twenty-four inches high. That that could be a very effective way to use that and some landscaping to separate that cartway. You know, maybe we bring that down to thirteen feet or twelve feet, whatever it's going to be.
They have five feet against the building, right? Against that side of the building that is. Leased space, right? So you could, you can bring that down to. One foot and put pylons there to to protect the building. I mean, we go to drive through at McDonald's all the time and you're right up against.
I think one of the other issues were if you took a look at that sidewalk area where they do have that exit. Those doorways open up. I I think once you open both of those doorways, you may only have about a foot. I don't know how much, I I took from the comment that was being made that. They want to try to keep that doorway with sidewalk underneath it, and if you did that, you you might not have that.
Yeah, well, you can scallop it in or something. I don't.
We can look at the landing, we can look at the appropriate size for the landing at that, that. Exit, you know, on the west side of the building. And maybe there's a, you know, maybe there's a foot, maybe there's something we can take from there, minimize the driveway width. That'll maximize the space between the existing residential property and the new curb along that driveway. And I really think separating the two. You know, I don't even like putting sidewalk. Unless it's in a downtown where you can, you know, you can achieve a six or an eight foot wide sidewalk. You know, typically when I do roadways, we're putting in a grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk. It makes the user of the sidewalk feel more comfortable. It gives you a little extra room if someone's coming towards you pushing a baby carriage, you can kind of maneuver around them without stepping out into the road. You know, we've done it as effective even twelve inches. If you go down. Not Maple, uh, it's getting late, what's this? To the east. The next street over. We put sidewalks in, I literally put a twelve inch grass strip in. It works. So anyway, we we, we'll talk with our site engineers and obviously the facilities committee. I think they heard you guys loud and clear tonight, and obviously I sit on that committee and I will take this back to them and we will. We will focus on that area.
I got, I got three more comments. First of all, it should be inviting to the kids. It shouldn't just keep them safe. It should be inviting. They should want to go there. They should feel comfortable there. Not uncomfortable. Second thing is, whatever that little retaining wall is, if that goes to the property boundary. Now you've got a whole bunch of flat space to deal with. And lastly, I I'm a fan of offering the neighbor. The opportunity to plant the landscaping on their lawn. I mean, if they wanted it, you could plant, you know, green giants on the, on the other side of that wall. And capture all of it for this purpose. Not that they have to agree to it, but to the extent that they did. You know, it would open up five or six more feet. All right. Anything else, Doug? Anything else, board members? I thought that was really, really productive. I I thought it was a really good exercise. Rich, you're going to make us talk about stormwater, aren't you?
Briefly, yes, when you guys are ready.
So, so just, just so everybody understands that the the process of adopting ordinances requires not only that the council does it. But that it comes to us and that we have an opportunity to react, and there's a limited amount of time, so we can't just throw it to the next meeting. We have to go through the process. So Rich is going to tell us what it is that we need to know.
Okay. So I'm just going to give you a real quick synopsis on how we got here. So. NJDEP, they recently amended the statewide stormwater management rules. It's known as NJAC seven colon eight. As a result. We need to amend. Our local ordinance, which is section thirty dash fourteen, it's in the. Land use and development regulations. And part of the process is, you know, myself and my staff drafted this ordinance along with. Our attorney. We brought it to the governing body for introduction. And as with every ordinance that falls in chapter thirty, it comes back to us, the planning board. So that's why we're here tonight. Basically, NJDEP amended their rules and as of March second. Less than two weeks ago. All local municipalities have to amend their local ordinance to be consistent with the NJDEP mandates. So obviously, it's March. Almost March seventeenth. You know, we're a couple of weeks behind, but it it's not unique. Uh, all of us are kind of in the same situation. And especially given, um, you know, what we've been dealing with, with COVID and everything else. So what we've done is we've, we've amended that ordinance section. I'm pretty sure it must have been in your packets as part of your agenda. It was introduced at the governing body meeting last month. We plan to take it back to them for final adoption. And you heard some of the new rules discussed tonight as we walk through the police station site plan. Most of the changes have to do with major development, much of which has to do with green infrastructure. When I talk about green infrastructure, we talk about what they say is best management practices. What alternative design? Features. And practices can you incorporate into a site, whether it's porous pavement, whether it's rain gardens, whether it's bio retention basins? Anything you can do to improve what they say, uh, what they call water quality. You know, back in the day, we used to, you know, as engineers, we would design a site, put in a bunch of catch basins and pipe. And get it out, get it off to the site and get it into the river as quick as you can. You know, obviously, fast forward fifty years later. All these green type, uh, design parameters are now in place where. They improve the water quality before, you know, before it recharges into our aquifers, before it ends up in the river. So. The ordinance itself takes into account all the considerations of NJDEP. Once we adopt it on the local level, we have to go to Monmouth County Planning Board. Uh, we have to meet with, they have a separate subcommittee. We actually have to have them review it and get formal approval with them. Uh, they have a technical advisory committee. It's the same process when this all came into effect years ago, back in. The mid two thousands. Actually, when I came on board in Fairhaven in oh seven, we were in the process of writing the current stormwater management ordinance. We took it to Monmouth County, got it, um, endorsed and approved. And in fact, it's actually part of your master plan. So this is simply an amendment. It's to meet the stricter mandates and the recent amendment. We've spoke to our environmental commission, we spoke to our green team, we've gotten some input from them. Um, there was some discussion about making stricter rules, but given the timeframe. All all involved, we decided let's, let's roll out with DDP's recommendations. Let's at least learn it, use it and utilize it. And then if we want to, in the future, if we want to make some changes, we can certainly do that.
Rich, how much of this is imposed by us and how much of this is imposed by them?
What do you mean by that?
I mean, is there anything inside of this ordinance that we're not being told we have to adopt?
Everything in the ordinance. I think most of you are familiar with. You you see this type of development occurring throughout New Jersey right now and throughout the peninsula right now. We've actually held a lot of our developers to this stricter standard, knowing that these rules are coming in. So. The other piece of it is, you know, as design engineers, when applicants bring their engineers in. It makes more sense to even stay consistent with state mandates and ordinances. And. Yeah, it it's, I think it's all consistent with, with what the county's doing and obviously at the state level. I don't know if that answers your question, but I, you know.
Yeah, I always understood that they'd kind of given us the form outline and said, you guys need to adopt this on your own. Wink wink, and then basically you don't have too much of a choice, which means that what we're being asked to adopt now is basically what we're being told we have to adopt.
What are the penalties if if we don't, just out of curiosity? I mean, what are what are the ramifications if we don't?
Well, the penalties of, there would be fines, uh, possible fines by DEP. I mean. Every year I have to do an annual report submitted to DEP on stormwater. On how the borough complies with the current rules. And it 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 not only includes stormwater management, it includes cleaning of the catch basins. And maintenance of all the infrastructure and and everything else that we have. This is a good thing for the borough. This, this creates, you know, more incentives. And it'll guide the developer. To 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 install some of these, you know, green type infrastructure improvements. Instead of a standard, well, is number one, instead of doing nothing, or instead of saying, well. Our pre-development is the same as our post-development, therefore we don't have to do anything. This, this institutes rules that that are to our benefit. And it also, it also talks about the sustainability and 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 the green, uh, design features. That we can, we can incorporate, many of which are aesthetically pleasing, rather than just putting in. You know, the standard catch basin and pipe. You know, you can design a very attractive bio retention basin.
Are there retro mandates or is everything grandfathered in?
No, once, once the ordinance gets adopted, any new applications before the planning board. Or if there's a site plan before the zoning board, we'd have to, um, to follow this, but. If they're look, there's, in the rules, it talks about. You know, if they're disturbing so much land and and things of that nature, so.
It's prospective, Sherry.
So that's it in a nutshell. You know, the intention is to, I I guess. Doug, you would simply what draft a letter?
Yeah, you know, there's, there's a, there's an FAQ page from the NJDEP that goes into a little more depth if someone really is interested in this. But it's, it's identifying very specifically what major development is. It's those types of things that are going to have to do to improve or, you know, to. Make sure that your runoff is of better quality and and do those things that now we find. Are the better practices with regard to some stormwater and how we do things to retain and recharge our bases. What I would do at this point in time is unless there are concerns with these, and 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 I, I don't want to. Completely parrot everything Todd has said, but in large part, the NJDEP said, you will adopt these. Now, you know, March second, we produced the right rules and regulations. And in certain instances, they give you some formats that you have to do. We have a little bit of of. Tailoring we can do with regard to the ordinances, but in large part, the major things that they want us to do have been. Dictated to us so that we make sure that we're all in line, and it also helps developers know. From one municipality to another, that there isn't going to be some weird quirk in this municipality. Uh, it's sort of like the residential improvement standards. You know, your roads are certain width, your stormwater quality, or those kinds of things. You know that if you have a major development. By way, the amount that you're moving, you're going to be obliged to do the following type of things. I will simply, unless there's a concern, basically say that, again, our review of an ordinance. Stormwater management is not inconsistent with your master plan or your master plan elements or your zoning ordinances. The things that are, might be mod, might be different are that these are new and improved things that the NJDEP says we're obliged to do. And to set forth that, as again, as I say. Can't see or tell you that there's anything inconsistent with your master plan because this is the new and improved version of how they want you to handle stormwater. With that, mayor and council go forward and adopt these regulations. They become part of our development regulations and on a go-forward basis. And someone comes in and we get to that point where we say, well, Rich, what are they supposed to do? For stormwater, which is well, based on the new regulations, you're supposed to put the following structures in. We usually don't have debate about that. It's whether or not you fall into major development or you don't fall into major development. Or are there other ways that you can get some waivers from the NJDEP not to have to do all of these things? And then that's a function more or less of NJDEP. So our letter would go out, generally they're consistent. Um. And they're going to become part of our ra, rules and regulations for development of major development sites.
Motion.
I'll second.
That requires a second.
There you go.
Yeah, listen to him.
All right, we need a roll call, Sandy.
All right, uh, Mr. Borderland.
Yes.
Mrs. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. Koch.
Yes.
Mr. Newell.
Yes.
Mr. Peolo.
Yes.
Mr. Rolf.
Yes.
Mr. Nitka.
So you dropped.
What?
I'm sorry, what?
What? Good lord.
Did we, did we lose Mr. Nitka?
Part-time attendee. Wasn't he late?
Dear, okay.
Sunshine planning board member.
All right, and Ms. Murray is absent, so we go to alternate one, Mrs. D'Angelo.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll wait and see if Mr. Nitka's coming back.
All right. Doug, are you still getting paid? Can we do your contract next month?
Well, she told me I'm fired this evening.
All right, you're not fired. All right.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I've got, I've got just two more things. Um, uh, the first is I want to comment about leaving early. Uh, we shouldn't be leaving early. I'll speak to Mike offline, but the other is I'd like to make sure that we have everybody here on time. We had 65 people from the public tonight. Um, and we held them up five minutes because we weren't ready to go. If you email me and tell me you're going to be late, then we'll just open and we'll go. Otherwise you should plan on being here 10 minutes before the meeting gets started. That's where all the good stuff happens right before. Not true, not true. Um, last thing is that, um, we still don't have a vice chair. Um, Fred reached out to me, uh, and expressed an interest and I had a really, really good talk with him. And I would like to nominate Fred Rolf as our, uh, vice chair of planning board for 2021.
Second.
Oh, who is the second?
David.
Thanks. All right. Uh, Mr. Borderland.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. Koch.
Yes.
Mr. Newell.
Yes.
Mr. Peolo.
Yes.
Mr. Rolf.
Yes.
And Mr. Nitka's not here. Um, Mrs. D'Angelo.
Yes.
Mr. Leader.
Yes. Awesome. Guys, this was a super important meeting, um, and I think it was really, really good. Um, uh, everyone did a great job. I really, really appreciate everybody's thoughtful comments. Um, keep it coming. It's so much better when somebody other than me is talking. Anything further?
Chair, to the chair, just hyper technically, we open to the public if there's any comment on anything else for our regular meeting.
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you so much, Doug. Um, Joe, we still have, uh, uh, going to open up to the public, um, if anybody, uh, has any comments or questions with regard to, uh, general planning board matters. Now is the time, please use the raise your hand feature.
Still got nine members, nine attendees out there.
God bless them.
God bless them.
No?
No, nobody raised. We're good. Uh, I think they all wanted to see that Mr. Rolf as the vice chair is now.
I told, I told him there was something good at the end, right?
Which is zero, so he's going to get twice that amount.
And Fred, just, just, just so you know, all this administrative stuff, man, that is, that's vice chair material right there. So you can run us through that next meeting.
Will do.
All right, motion to close, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Second.
Hi.
Thanks a lot, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good work, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.